One minute to air, the live stream has started. Thirty seconds.
Good evening, everyone. It is the seven o'clock hour. It's a little bit different tonight on the dais. I think probably historical as well with all of these women up here. So it's a crowd look. I'd like to welcome each and every one of you all who have joined us tonight for this special joint meeting of the Durham City Council and the Board of County Commissioners. We welcome those of you who have decided to join us here in person as well as those who are joining us remotely. And I'd like to say welcome to City Hall, to our Chair Brenda Howerton and her colleagues on the County Commissioners. We're glad you all are here tonight.
Thank you.
At this time, we will recognize Vice Chair Wendy Jacobs, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now turn to our city clerk, who will call the role for our city council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor O'Neill.
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Holsey Hyman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
And Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Thank you.
And I will call the county clerk to call the role for the county commissioners.
Chair Brenda Howerton.
Here.
Vice Chair Wendy Jacobs.
Here.
Commissioner Namashina Burns.
Present.
Commissioner Neta Alom.
Present.
And Commissioner Heidi Carter.
Present.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I invite you to join me in a moment of silence for what has been a particularly bloody day here in Durham. Thank you. We keep those who have lost loved ones today, we keep them lifted. Now to turn to the people's business tonight. I have one announcement to make regarding the public hearing, which I will then turn over to our chair. And we will conduct that together. We will have a listening session tonight. We will take all of the time tonight to listen to folks who have joined us here in person and signed up to speak to us, as well as those who are joining us and speaking to us via the Internet. And so the individual boards will be listening intently to have further discussions when we are in our normal meetings. So tonight will be a listening session for us. All right, and with that, I'll turn it over to my chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I will start with the staff report. And this is the Durham Comprehensive Plan that will be, she will, the staff will be speaking on.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna do my best not to touch the microphone, but it's a little bit awkward. I am Lisa Miller. I'm with the City-County Planning Department. I'm part of the Comprehensive Plan Team. We're excited to be here tonight at the culmination of four years of work towards a new comprehensive plan that centers community voices and equity to present this for our final public hearing to our Board of County Commissioners, our city council, and to our community. I just wanted to take a quick moment and say a huge thank you to all of the folks from the city and county administrations, all the elected officials, for the work of coming together tonight was a big task. So just wanted to say thank you to everyone who's had a hand in making that happen. And as the mayor mentioned, after this final public hearing tonight, we will be bringing a final version of the Comprehensive Plan to each of the elected boards for adoption at their regular business meetings. And as of now, we anticipate doing that in October, but we'll publish that information as it is set. So as we get started, we want to share, acknowledge, and thank all of the many individuals and organizations who've helped us get here, who have worked alongside us to develop and improve this plan, to ensure that it reflects the needs and priorities of this community. We've worked hard to build these relationships and to work to rebuild trust through this work, and could not have done that without the willingness of community members and staff who partnered with us. When we started this work in the summer of 2019, we put out a wide call for resident interest in volunteering to be part of our outreach team to help us think about, what does it look like for us to engage residents? We had many people who responded to that initial call, some of whom have worked with us for the last four years, and others who joined that group along the way as we made new connections. Also in 2019, we started an engagement ambassador program with the help of our Neighborhood Improvement Services staff, which continued throughout the development of the plan through partnership with Idealisms and the Durham County Transit Plan Team. The residents who participated as ambassadors challenged us to be truly committed to our claims to center equitable engagement and to listen to residents who haven't been heard in the past. The perspectives reflected in our new plan are owed in large part to the commitment of these residents who are willing to engage their communities around this vision and work despite the lack of trust that they may have had with our organization. As one of the most impactful aspects of developing this plan, we wanted to thank the staff, resident leaders, engagement ambassadors, outreach team members, planning commissioners, that were willing to be a part of the policy working groups that were formed, to come together in this combined staff and resident shared space to learn how we can communicate more effectively and empathetically with each other, and to work towards a plan that centers equity and community needs and priorities, and works towards the implementation of our plan's vision. These connections and relationships were built significantly, were significantly supported by staff in our, staff partners in Neighborhood Improvement Services, the Office on Youth, and the Office of Performance and Innovation. All of the city and county staff who were part of our staff technical team also helped to think about how our community's vision could be worked into policies and implementation, and particularly those staff who were a part of the policy working groups. The labor of creating this plan has been shared by many. We've listed additional thanks and acknowledgements in the last page of the plan. And with that, we just want to say a huge thank you to everyone who's helped us along the way. So we have a few goals for this meeting that we will share. We're gonna share a brief overview of the full plan, provide a little bit of background on the urban growth boundary and future growth areas, talk about the Planning Commission's recommendation and a couple of policy edits, and then a summary of some of the requested map changes to the urban growth boundary and future growth areas. So tonight, as the mayor mentioned, we are here to present an overview of the plan to hold a public comment where we as staff and our elected officials from the city and county can hear what our residents have to say about this before the plan goes to our separate elected board meetings with a final version of the plan to be adopted. And time for us to answer questions from the commissioners and the city council on the plan before the plan is finalized. So I'll briefly talk about what's in the plan as just a way to make sure that we all have some shared understanding of what we're talking about this evening. But before I get into the contents of the plan, I wanted to share just a little bit of context about how this plan fits with a couple of other projects. So the Comprehensive Plan is a big-picture vision and policy document that lays out what we want to have happen in our community in the future. It is not a regulatory document and can't create or enforce rules, but it can describe how we want the regulations to be changed. And many of the actions listed in the plan describe specific ways that our regulations for development should change. Therefore, once our plan is adopted, we will begin a rewrite of the UDO, which is the Unified Development Ordinance. This contains the rules for development for our community. And this effort to rewrite these rules will be a significant part of how we implement this plan and help turn the vision of the comp plan into a reality. And finally, while we've been working on the Comprehensive Plan, there have been some proposed amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, either privately or publicly initiated. One example of a privately initiated request is the Simplifying Codes for Affordable Development, or SCAD, request. Some of that proposal complies with the vision in the plan and some of it does not. In addition, a publicly initiated amendment to the UDO is underway about phased development and tree preservation. This amendment was initiated by staff in response to concerns heard by residents and complies with the vision in the comp plan, as well as works to implement some of the environmental actions from the plan related to mass grading and tree preservation. And that amendment is scheduled to go to the elected officials for adoption.
Ms. Miller, if I could interrupt you for one second, please. We just want to make sure that if folks are in the room who need interpretation, that equipment is available with our clerks, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you. So with that, I will jump into the components of the plan briefly. First component is the community goals and objectives and the guiding values that were adopted in the summer of 2021 and have guided our work to create the remainder of the plan over the last two years. We have a growth management strategy that includes characteristics of a 15-minute community that we want to strive for, and the growth management tools of the urban growth boundary and the future growth areas. You'll see those referred on the slides as the UGB and the FGAs. We'll go into more detail about those two tools a little bit later in the presentation. We also have policies organized under 10 different topics, and each of those topic areas is followed by a list of actions that could help us implement those policies. We have a list of the full 20 place types and their descriptions organized by broad use category, which is the key to understanding our place type map, which is the new future land use map. And that is also included in that component of the plan. Finally, we have the implementation section, which lays out how we'll implement the plan, specifically for planning staff, but also across our city and county departments, how we'll track progress towards the plan's goals, and ways to continue our transparency and accountability efforts to the community. All of the actions that are listed in the plan document are organized into a separate implementation list that indicates a primary responsible party for leading that work. And planning staff will be working with city and county staff to further develop the implementation list, including prioritizing these actions and determining how to approach interdepartmental collaboration efforts as needed going forward. And that implementation list will be updated with the final draft of the action items for adoption. So briefly, there are three main ways that the plan gets used. Informing development decisions made by our elected officials, such as a zoning map change or an annexation, to determine the focus of our planning department's work or work plan. For example, updating rules for development that are in the UDO, or identifying areas of the community where further land use studies are needed to determine how future development should occur. And it's also used to guide work of other departments and agencies. For example, determining where new water and sewer lines should or should not be extended, where new schools should be planned, or where new parks are needed. We also just wanted to highlight that while portions of the plan have been developed and presented to the community in parts at different points during the plan development due to the size of the project, once adopted, the map, the place type descriptions, and the policies will all work together and be considered together to inform decisions related to land use, whether those decisions are privately or publicly initiated. And these pieces working together will set out a new vision for how our community will grow, and is different from our past plan in a few important ways. I'm not gonna talk through all of these, but just want to emphasize a couple of ways that this plan is different than our plan was in 2005. It tries to balance growing smartly within our urban footprint and aligning city expansion more closely with infrastructure planning. It focuses on our highest priorities that we heard from residents around access to housing, safe transportation options, and community sustainability and resiliency. And it tries to work towards more equitable outcomes throughout the plan. And now I'm going to hand it over to Sarah Long to talk a little bit more about the urban growth boundary.
Good evening, and thank you all for being here. So starting with the urban growth boundary, as the plan has gone through public hearings, the concerns from community members have mainly related to the urban growth boundary. The proposed urban growth boundary is a line beyond which the city should not extend services, and particularly important for land use development, should not extend water and sewer services beyond that line. This line is based on an old Comprehensive Plan's suburban tier, which functioned the same way. In the old plan, the line was called suburban tier, and the new plan is called the urban growth boundary, or UGB for short. This boundary helps us balance where growth occurs and how infrastructure is planned with a desire to preserve environmentally sensitive areas, farmland, and rural character in this part of our community. Staff has proposed to reduce the UGB compared to the existing suburban tier by about 10.8 square miles specifically, where infrastructural or environmental constraints exist. The future growth areas work alongside the urban growth boundary. Future growth areas could become the next places to see development activity and are generally found on the fringes of the city limits, shown as the red highlighted crosshatch area in this map here. Future growth areas are a part of Durham within the urban growth boundary, and they are currently underdeveloped or sparsely developed and that need critical infrastructure upgrades like water, sewer, or fire services to serve new developments. As a reminder, all of the FGAs are within the UGB, urban growth boundary, and have place types mapped for when these areas are ready for development. Therefore, any change to that proposed place type here would not require a place type designation change because they've already been approved as a part of the FGA. As we've worked through the Planning Commission public hearing process, six areas remained where staff had not heard clear direction. For those who have been following these discussions very closely, two areas, Snow Hill Road Area and Arrowhead Area, are places where the Planning Commission and Joint City-County Committee seem to agree with staff's recommendation that they remain outside of the urban growth boundary. You'll see in the updated map in Attachment B that those are two areas, Snow Hill and Arrowhead, are outside of the recommended urban growth boundary, and staffers recommend they remain and that that has also been agreed upon by Planning Commission. We presented detailed information on each of the remaining six areas during the work session presentations to B-O-C-C and C-C. We'll provide a brief summary of those areas tonight. So first, we want to talk a bit about residential units and accommodation for future needs. Part of creating this map and the growth management strategy has considered what residents said they want to see in their community, how they want to move around Durham, how they would like environmentally sensitive lands protected, the strain on existing infrastructure, the need for more housing, housing types, and housing affordability, and generally, our changing needs as a community. Given that we're recommending removal of a little under 11 square miles from significant development potential, again, for environmental, water, or sewer or fire reasons, that has brought up some questions about how this will impact the supply of future housing units. We want to try to balance all of these goals and be thoughtful about these different trade-offs. The Comprehensive Plan is not only recommending areas for development, but also types of development and intensities of development. The places, the place types will give us information about the housing types, the mobility, environment considerations, and infrastructure needs to consider for future development. The place type map does not anticipate more units and a greater mix of uses where possible throughout the urban or urbanizing areas within the UGB. So given all of this context, we wanted to share these estimates about potential housing supplies specifically. The Triangle J Council of Governments estimates that by 2050, Durham will need an additional 60,000 housing units to accommodate expected population growth. Using our best estimate, we believe that even with the proposed reductions in the urban growth boundary, that this plan accommodates an additional 143,000 housing units at full build-out. This outcome depends on implementing the Comprehensive Plan and for the housing market to respond. We believe that this plan provides a safety net in terms of the number of needed housing units to allow for unforeseen circumstances such as changes in the housing market or increases of population growth in excess of their projections. There's more information in your packet on the potential housing units the plan can accommodate, including breakdowns by place types and potential densities we may see. And so after the public hearings and discussions at five different Planning Commission meetings, the Planning Commission voted ununanimously on the June 13th for the year to recommend approval of the new Comprehensive Plan as recommended by staff with one caveat. The recommendation included a request to expand the language on Policy 165 to address how decisions to changes to the place type map are made. The revised policy can be seen here. And I'm gonna read specifically the section at the bottom, starting with decisions on the place type map amendments. So it reads, "Decisions on the place type map amendments should include these additional considerations. For changes to the place type designation, the changes, the changes of the intensity of development envisioned for an area, whether the proposed proposal has demonstrated benefits to affordable housing production, environmental goals, and approaches to equitable engagement and outcomes. For changes to the urban growth boundary, whether these parcels were previously included in the 2005 Comprehensive Plan's suburban development tier." This revision calls for consideration of whether properties were previously within the suburban tier and that any changes in intensity of place types on the map be furthering affordable housing production, environmental goals, and approaches to equitable engagement and outcomes. We are showing the revised policy language here, and it can also be found on Page 4 of the staff memo. In addition to Policy 165, staff has also recommended another policy change, this time to Policy 164. And this is in response to discussions we've had with city council and the county commissioners earlier this month. We continue to hear questions about how we might adjust the map if we determine, after the plan is adopted, that the reduction in the UGB is negatively impacting the goals in the plan. To address this, we propose the edit to the Policy 164 shown here, indicating that we will assess the UGB every other year as a part of the evaluation of how the plan is working and how it may need to be adjusted. In this policy, we lay six criteria for the evaluation and assessment report that will be done every other year. We have updated the six items to include the following. Identify comprehensive amendments to the place type map, including the urban growth boundary or future growth areas, needed because of development activity or changes in conditions, including new major public investment, housing supply, or population growth. These two edits to Policy 164 and 165 are intended to help us move forward at the staff recommendation map while addressing the various concerns we have heard through the public hearing process since February and around the drawing of this boundary. Through Policy 165, we can review small changes to the map on a case-by-case basis. For Policy 164 requires that we assess the map every other year to determine what changes need to be made. And so looking county-wide, there are parcels that are shown on the blue in this map that are currently in the suburban tier. Under the old plan, staff has actually recommended removing those from the urban growth boundary in the new plan. Staff heard from a number of property owners who are requesting that their properties, their property or properties be added back into the urban growth boundary. This is why these areas have been brought up to discussion now. One of these, one of these areas is different in that it's a change in a future growth area rather than a change in the UGB, and is within the urban growth boundary, and it's circled red in this map. And the, all of the areas are considered to be taken, brought back into the UGB are circled in red. And the final area that's a part of the future growth area is actually shown as a circle in yellow towards the bottom. Just as a reminder, the future growth areas are all located within the urban boundary. So we will start with a review of the five areas that staff has recommended be removed from the urban growth boundary, and property owners are requesting that they stay within it. The total percentage of these areas in contention is less than 1%. That's just an idea to get the scope of what's actually in contention here. Each of these areas has been detailed in the JCCPC, JCCC, and Planning Commission, as well as the work sessions. So we're just providing an overview, and we can delve into more details of any of these as needed. So the Staggville Road and Old Oxford Road area, which is number one on the map, has an area of approximately 725 acres. The Farrington Mill Road area, which is number two, and in the bottom corner there, the bottom, that's the southwest corner, that has 277 acres approximately. The Patterson Road area, which is number three, is 205 acres. The Cheek Road and Redwood area is about 518 acres, number four. And then the Hamlin Road area, which is number five, is 43.4 acres. For these five cases, staff recommends moving forward at the staff recommendations from January. As previously mentioned, the proposed policy edits are intended to address concerns we have heard so that indecisions can be made on a case-by-case basis and parcel-by-parcel basis as needed in the future. So for the first five areas listed here, staff recommended retracting the urban growth boundary in January, in the January proposal due to infrastructure constraints, either water, sewer, or fire. Property owners have requested being brought back into the UGB. Some residents have requested the property stay out of the UGB, and Planning Commission has taken polls on these, but ultimately didn't have a clear consensus. For the last item, however, on the list, staff now recommends retracting the southeast future growth area just in the northwest corner due to updated information from the fire department provided this summer stating that the area can be served without building a new station. We heard from property owners and residents a desire to remove the whole future growth area from the UGB or return the full boundary of the FGB proposed initially without removing the northwest corner of retraction. So this is the final recommendation for the staff, is removing that northwest corner. And like I said before, as needed, we can go into more details, and we have the more detailed maps available. So our goals for this meeting are to, since we provided the overview of the plan, the remainder of our goals for this meeting include holding the public hearing where staff and our city and county elected officials can together hear what community members have to say about the plan before it's finalized and adopted, and for the county commissioners and city council to have time to ask clarifying questions related to the project before the plan goes up for adoption in their future meetings, which is anticipated to happen in October. So thank you. This concludes our presentation, and we look forward to your questions.
Turn that on. You've heard the reports from the staff, and I will declare this public meeting open. And as the mayor and I will go back and forth calling names, we will for you to come to the speaker. You'll be given two minutes each. And if there are individuals that came with a group and you don't prefer to come to the mic, then if you might want to just stand and have one person speak, totally up to you. So we're gonna begin calling, I'll call the first seven, and then the mayor will go back and forth. Okay. So I will start with Charles A. Gibbs, Gina Hasbrook, and if you would just line up. Adam Abram. Adam Abram. So, ma'am, if you'll come to the mic. We don't understand what you're... I can't hear you. What are you saying? So, this meeting tonight is for you to talk to the boards. We're not going to go back and forth with questions tonight. We are here to listen to you. And then, the boards, the individual boards, the county commissioners, and the council will have discussions at a separate time individually. The county commissioners will take it back across the street and have their conversation. And the mayor and the council will have a conversation here. But tonight, we want to hear from you. Is that clear?
We have approximately 52 people, 53 people here to speak to us in person, and about 15 or more...
Online.
Internet. So, we want to make sure that we hear from everybody tonight.
Okay. The number just increased. So, we've just got another five cards. Okay, where did I stop? One, two, three. Abram, okay. And then, Jason. Where is that kid? Silvers. I need to put my glasses on. David Smith, Tim Akron, and Pam Williams. Those are the first seven people. And you have two minutes each. And who's... Are they keeping... Oh, the time is over here. Okay. All right, go ahead.
Do I have the floor?
Yes, you have the floor.
Okay. My name is... Well, first, good evening to this gathering of commissions and committee. My name is Charles Gibbs. I live at 802 Royal Oaks Drive in Durham, North Durham County. And I am, to stay with the agenda, I am not for extending the urban growth boundary and allowing for more dense development. And I am not for... I am for not awarding conservation subdivisions so freely. And that has been going on for the last couple of years. The planning department has awarded that in complete disregard for how it is written in the UDO. And that takes care of that. But I have another issue to bring before you. In all my years in architecture and my years at Duke University Medical Center, I have not witnessed such rapid growth in development. You can consider it positive growth or whatever. But the growth, to me, and developers do a service for us. But when it becomes...
Your time is up, sir. Just finish your statement.
Pardon?
Your time is up. Your two minutes is up.
Well, when it becomes an investment...
Thank you, sir. Your two minutes is up. We need to move to the next person. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jan Hasbrook, a 41-year Durham resident at 13 Piney Park Lane. I'm a past president of the Home Builders Association of Durham, Orange and Chatham, a 30-year veteran of new home sales and marketing in the Triangle, and a current Realtor and educator for NEHB in the North Carolina Builders Institute. I stand in opposition to the original restrictions imposed by the urban growth boundary. The comprehensive plan is a monumental intellectual achievement as it needs to manage Durham from now through 2040. But the plan's restrictive anti-growth stance is flawed. The removal of areas formally within the suburban tier line of the 20205 plan is justified by claiming that infrastructure costs will break the budget. In reality, infrastructure is typically paid for by the development community. The plan represents a drastic loss and potential tax base for the city, and it's a breach of faith with the landowners whose values will drop precipitously once it's excluded from development with city water and sewer. Addressing the shortfall in future demand by developing infill sites already in the city by modifying zoning to allow multifamily housing ignores that it is single-family housing that promotes homeownership and builds wealth. And it is homeownership, not apartments, that weaves the fabric of a tight-knit community. This plan discourages homeownership by removing eight square miles of prime developable land from city annexation. And ironically, despite the plan's goal to create a 15-minute city where everything is within a 15-minute drive, much of the land removed from the UGB is proximate to RTP. That means demand will go to our neighboring counties, increasing drive time. It's bad for our tax revenues and worse for the environment. Affordability is driven by a balance between supply and demand. This plan restricts supply, and demand comes from our being in the top-five relocation destinations, especially for those baby chasers, as well as our desirability to those already here. Let's modify the plan to include those areas that were formerly within the suburban tier and add it to the development parcels like Arrowhead and West Durham, where exclusion makes no sense.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I'm Adam Abram. My family owns 82 acres in the Arrowhead district. We request our property, not the entirety of Arrowhead, be included in the city's UGB. There's a map being distributed to each of you. Our property is six minutes from Duke University and walking distance from Forest View Elementary with direct access to both Cornwallis and Irwin roads. Average traffic daily at the intersection of Cornwallis and Irwin is only 1,400 cars. Arrowhead was included in the planning staff's first map of the urban growth boundary. In reaction to neighborhood resistance, the area was removed from the UGB. Focusing only on our property allows neighbors who wish to remain outside the city to do so. As part of the city, our property will significantly enhance the city's tax base and permit more imaginative, more affordable, and more environmentally sound development inside the city. If included in the UGB, we will return to the council with a proposal for a variety of uses that will include affordable housing. Our property is large enough to pair affordable housing with higher-value uses, allowing us flexibility to build more affordable housing. By right, we could develop 33 McMansions on the two-acre lots served by septic and well. This backward-looking approach will not enhance Durham. While many of my wonderful neighbors will advocate for this regressive and unimaginative use, it is not even consistent with how their properties are developed. 72% of the 131 homes in Arrowhead are on lots smaller than the two-acre minimum required of the rural tier. 13 of the 20 homes surrounding and touching my property are on lots of less than two acres. The septic tanks on those homes depend upon...
Sir, your time is up. Would you wrap up your statement, please?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I promise, if approved and put in the UGB, we'll come back with a specific proposal that will include affordable housing paired with higher-value uses. That'll be great for Durham.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Jason Silvers. I'm a resident of Durham. I'm not as nearly well-prepared or well-read on infrastructure or development as many of you here tonight. For me, I just wanted to be here to speak on affordable housing myself, people my age that I work with. It's difficult to find any housing anywhere. And for myself specifically, I have a wonderful girlfriend that I would love to propose to, love to look for a house, like to stay in Durham. But it's difficult. It's difficult everywhere, as everyone knows. And so, I just wanted to speak on that and how, as much as apartments and condos are helpful and it's great to have that kind of option and development, housing itself is really where a lot of people my age would like to start a family. And again, we are residents of Durham. We'd like to stay in Durham. I don't have much more to say than pretty much it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Smith. I live on Front Street in Durham. I've been appraising property in Durham County for the past 40 years. First of all, I'd like to thank staff because I know they've worked hard. I was on the Planning Commission, also the Board of Adjustment, and I know how hard they work. So, I really do appreciate their work. I'm a little concerned about property owners that are going to be outside, moved outside the urban growth boundary. One of the things we appraisers do is we see whether or not it's in the urban growth boundary. And if it's outside of that, it has a significantly lower value. So, you will be hurting the property value, and you will be hurting these owners, who are not developers for the most part. They're individuals and their families. So, you will be hurting them if you do this. Also, I am the chair of the Board of Equalization Review, which oversees tax values. So, these properties that have been within the urban growth boundary have higher tax values. So, these people have been paying higher taxes all these years, and all of a sudden, you're taking it out, and their value is gone. It's not where it was. So, it's not really fair to these people. So, I really hope you will consider not taking the areas outside of the urban growth boundary that are currently in there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Tim Alran, and I want to thank the council and commissioners for allowing us to be here this evening and also echo what David said in terms of thanking the staff for what I know is a very difficult and long, painful process to go through and constantly have it picked apart. But I think it is necessary and appreciate the opportunity to speak. I live at 2310 West Club Boulevard. I am a licensed Realtor here in Durham, working primarily in residential real estate. I don't need to tell you, we have a housing problem, as many places do. We're forcing more people, as this individual said earlier, looking for a place that's not in Durham. And we want Durham to grow. We want everyone to have a home here as a Realtor, and I know as a citizen of Durham. And so, limiting land use limits home building. And so, additionally, as we push people out to the other parts of the city and other cities nearby, which we're doing every day, we're all over the places instead of my hometown where I want to sell the most, it's creating more traffic, more emissions, more problems on the road, more sprawl. And so, I'm urging in the reconsideration of having the urban growth boundary to match the old suburban tier line. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Number seven.
Yeah. Commissioner Howardson, we have a presentation, so I need to figure out how to get this up. And also, there's a...
Ms. Williams, are you going to be able to do your... In two minutes?
What it is, each person's going to come up here and take two minutes or less for each slide for the presentation.
So, what we'll need to do is know who they are so that if they're going to come up... If they're going to come up to speak, we need to know who they are so that we can pull their card.
Let me see if I have...
And they will... I can give you a list, and they have all signed in.
Would that be Ms. Tina Motley, Mr. Gary McLean, Ms. Pam Andrews, Donna Stanback, Andrea Quinn, Kenan Conder, and Scott Silvers are the names that I have.
That's all these people on this list?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do this for us so we don't hold up. If you guys will take your list and get with one of the staff people and get in line together, that won't hold up everybody else.
That's right.
If you do that, please.
And when each person comes up, they will introduce themselves so you'll know who's speaking and everything. Now, there are some people here that has never done this before, so I'm going to be trying to help them out with moving the slides and everything.
And all of you have signed up? That's on this list?
All right. If you would just go ahead, and then what I'll do is I'll try to check them off and...
Okay.
...will help me as well here.
Okay. Okay.
So just those who are in this particular group, if you just get in a line and we'll go through these cards as you're calling them.
Thank you very much for taking us, giving us this opportunity. And I'm, I'm going to go ahead and start, so we can keep everything moving as they arrange. My name is Pam Williams, and my address is on record. I'm a lifelong resident of Durham County. Good evening to everyone, and I appreciate you giving us this time to express our concerns and issues with the comprehensive plan. I really have no issues with the comprehensive plan, except for the concerns about the UGB and the FGA, the future growth area, and that is what this group is going to be letting you know what our issues and concerns are. I would like to emphasize that over four hundred and sixty-five signatures were gathered in March and April of this year in southeast Durham in opposition to expanding the urban growth boundary into Cheek, Redwood Road, Patterson Road area, and opposing to removing a portion of the area between Kemp Road and the Critical Watershed from the southeast future growth area. We hope to provide you with reasons why we made these requests. Our issues and concerns that will be presented tonight are not just in southeast Durham, but could be anywhere development is being proposed and boundaries change. We are truly, oops, okay, oops, okay. We are truly concerned about the issues of the degrading of the environment, issues that are of concern to the existing residents, and we do have a vested interest in Durham. We want development to be conducted in a responsible way for the environment and humans. This is why we are requesting that the urban growth boundary do not include Cheek, Redwood Road, Patterson Road, and to keep all area between Kemp Road and the Critical Watershed in the future growth area. There is plenty of time with the bi-yearly reviews of the comprehensive plan to make any future changes. Right now, the development pace is so fast, and the environment and people in southeast Durham are suffering, and we lack support services and infrastructure. We look forward to working with the Planning Department and updating the ordinances that will help provide a clearer vision of Durham's environmental goals and providing homes that our children will want to live here for decades. I have lived here for over six decades. I didn't hear, I'm sorry. Thank you.
My name is Wanda Allen, my address is on record. I'm here this evening to ask you to not put Cheek, Redwood, and Patterson in the urban growth area. There are many reasons that I'm asking this. The land is adjacent to the Critical Watershed. It also, there are many farmers in this area. This will have a drastic impact on the farmers and the small business in this area. You may know a lot of these farmers, they sell down at the Central Market, they sell to Whole Foods, they sell also to Red and White. Many of the farmers have approached some of the landowners in this area, asking to purchase the land, but they have refused to sell it to them. They need the land, we need that land to provide this food supply in our area. If you put this back into the urban growth boundary, I will ensure you, it will have an impact on the food supply here in Durham. I'm also standing here tonight asking you, do not put northern, northwestern portion of Kemp Road in the future growth area. There's many reasons for that also, from many that you guys are, have heard many, many times, but you are aware that Falls Lake, Lip Creek are damaged. You know that, because you have already allocated sixty-six point three million dollars to clean this up from fiscal year twenty already to two twenty-four. There is already seventeen thousand nine hundred dwellings going to be put into this area. If you note on your slide up here, there's three hundred and seventy-two point five that is proposed, if you put it back into the future growth area. There's a school coming into this area. The data shows that we do not have the infrastructure to support this future growth.
Your time is up, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Carrie Woke, I live at fifty-six oh two Dude Ranch Road in Durham, and I, my slide is showing that we are suffering from low response time for fires, so there's no new fire station is, for this area is in the plan. There we go. Roll it, okay, sorry. You'd think I would be able to do that. And so this slide is showing that our response times are not where they need to be, the target line, you can see the target line there. So our infrastructure is not able to keep up with the growth that's being planning. But I would also like to speak particularly for Patterson Road and Cheek Road. As Sarah said, the staff is recommending that these areas be kept out of the urban growth boundary due to the lack of the infrastructure I just spoke about, as well as the environmental impact. So these areas are way too close to the lake, as Wanda just said, the lake is damaged, and we are just damaging it further. Developing these with high density would be too much environmental damage. So we need to preserve this part of Durham as low density, so there's space for nature. I know fighting climate change is important to all of us, I hope, and clear cutting forests is just not the path forward for combating this existential threat. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Michael Rowe, I live at five-six-zero-two Dude Ranch Road in Durham, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak here today. I'm, I'm here to ask for the Patterson, Cheek, Redwood, and Kemp Road areas to not be included in the urban growth boundary. In the areas in question, and in Durham, as, in Durham County as a whole, fire services are already stretched thin, and further growth in these historically rural areas will put our undue burden on our fire, I'm sorry about that, put undue burden on our firefighters, and put the community as a whole in these areas at risk. By the city's own estimate, the current plan more than accommodates the expected growth without including these sensitive areas. So I would, here just to ask that those areas not be included. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Coco signed in, but she's, isn't on the list that they handed, so this is, say your name and your address.
Hi, my name's Coco Rowe, and I'm definitely not as prepared as anyone else here. I live on fifty-six oh two Dude Ranch Road, and I just wanted to say, all of these decisions that you're making about developing all this new land are going to negatively impact the future, and it's going to be my future, and we're going to have to do something about it.
Did she not, did she not fill out a card?
Yeah, she has a card.
She did?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker.
Okay, can we get the slide up? Great. Tammy Soya, Baptist Road. I'm going to be speaking about the EMS concerns in our area. We've been tracking this since January, and there's been many times that there's no EMS available, and just last Thursday, there was an assault called in, and there was no EMS available. Also, one thing that we also need to think about is the police coverage. The growth that we're having, the spot annexation that we're having in southeast Durham, you know, the policemen don't know whose jurisdiction it is, and, you know, this may impact the, the ability of the police to respond to issues. And lastly, we know we have a first responders' concerns, we know we've lost thirty firemen in the last sixty days, or ninety days, and we've got sixty in to be trained up, but there's no guarantee that they'll be here with Durham. So I implore you to keep the Cheek Road and Patterson Road out of the UGB, Kemp Road and, Kemp Road in the future growth area. And just to keep this in perspective, the, the developments that's happened, less than fifty percent has been occupied, we've got problems now. Why put, why change the map? Keep, keep Cheek Road out of the UGB, keep Kemp in the future growth area. Let us solve our problems before you make the changes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Glenn, and I own a home on twelve-twenty-three Junction Road, and I'm here to address the issue with water. My home, my home is one of the homes that was impacted with the water from the, the development K and B homes behind where my home is, they were doing some blasting, and my home is one of the wells that was contaminated right after that blast. We've had cancel out to look at the situation, we've had the wells checked, the water, the water is still dirty, it still stinks, and I want to tell you, I really appreciate the tanker truck that has been put out there, it has been a big help, it's a blessing, but we gotta have some way to get this area fixed. We have development on, on the Gear Street Furrow Road side, we have development this beginning across the railroad tract on the Furrow Road across the street from our house, we have sewer with no water. So we're kind of like in the middle of a sandwich with water on both sides with no water. We can see the hydrants from the back, from the back of the property, but if there's any way, there could be some consideration to put the water down that road, or somehow get us some kind of water for, for our help. The lots are so small, it's hard to drill another well to service those homes, because we may still get that same type of water even if we drill a new well. So it would be nice to have some consideration to see if we could get some kind of water or help, and we appreciate what you are doing for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glenn. Next speaker. Your name, please.
Yeah, my name is Susanna Strassa, I live in thirteen oh seven John Show Road, and I agree with the gentleman, two years and a half, I had a nightmare. I'm seventy-eight years old, I have medical problems, I cannot carry water to the house, and we constantly out of water. And if we have water, you can see how it looks, it's completely filthy, smells, and please do something, that we get some water. How come the development in front has water and the back has water, and we don't? It'd be a very simple solution, if the city allow us to have the city water, that's in there, it's close by us. Please do that.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Sorry. Hello, my name is Lourdes Villasquez, and I'm, I, I live on twelve-twenty-three Junction Road in Durham. We have, my family and I, we have the same situation of water too. I'm just here to, to share a little about our situation in our house. It's definitely very difficult for us to have clean water. I know we have the community tank water, which has been helping us, but sometimes it's not enough for all the houses in there, so we are very limited now, and before we had big issues about the clean water, like Susan said, we had dory water, stinky water, I mean, was, the smell was very strong, even my daughter, after she took a shower, or we took a shower, we had some rash in our bodies, or we had some itchy areas, and really was very bad for a long time, and this has been happening since last fall, so definitely if you consider to have some clean water on the street, and definitely we need it, because there is lots of kids in that area living without clean water before. And now we have some, but not everybody is getting water from that community tank. So some families, they just maybe are not coming to speak up, or they don't know where to, to call, or where to talk, and maybe some of them doesn't speak English, or they afraid to come up, and definitely something, maybe we should do something about it, just please don't delete that and keep that on, on your list. We really appreciate that, because again, there is lots of kids, lots older in that, in that street, and definitely we will appreciate for any help. Thank you, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Can we get the PowerPoint up? Thank you.
My name's Ronnie Turner, I'm here representing my in-laws, Linda and Tillman Coley live at, live at seven oh four Doc Nichols Road. They were one of the earlier groups that were, they have lost all their water because of blasting. It cost them ten thousand dollars just to get water back, and I was lucky to find somebody that would do it in three and a half months to drill a new well. There's so much construction going on, not just where there's city water, but people with outlying areas that, that need water to drink, just as these other people. They had water, they did fine with it, till one day, they went out there, and part of the problem is, they're blasting without permits, they're blasting after hours. We're standing there, and we know it. Mayor Pro Temp, when I said this last time, where's your proof? How do you prove somebody broke the law in the middle of the evening? There's nobody guarding, watching these circumstances. There's construction going on, and they're blasting behind the house, and my mother-in-law's standing in the backyard, and I said, well, you want to come mash the button? What? There's no regard for the people's safety and the lives that they've had to live there, they've been there fifty years. My father-in-law is afraid to go in the yard. That's wrong. You've done this to these people by just, okay, they making money, they got a contract, that's great. Nobody's watching them. Not one soul is watching these people. They go out there and do whatever they please, they block the roads, I pull up to get her to take her to the doctor, and a man standing there directing traffic starts cussing and hollering at me, and telling him, y'all run over him, y'all run over him, kill him, he's in my way. And this is a guy holding a flag that says stop and slow. Why are we living in that? I'm going to get her and take her to the doctor, I know I can't go up the road, so I pull over in a neighbor's yard and walk in there to get her, and this is the way we get treated. They don't care about us, they don't care if we live or die. Somebody in this group, or collectively, y'all have got to take control of these people. It's not that we don't want them to build, it's how they build, it's what they do to the people that have lived there, that have paid taxes for all these years.
Thank you, Mr. Turner, your time is up. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paige Polk, and I am a South Durham resident, living on Doc Nichols Road as well, that's near the Briar Creek area, and I do appreciate the time and energy that has gone into building this very nuanced comprehensive plan, however, I mean, not however, especially the focus that is going toward affordable housing, however, I'm asking that you do not expand the urban growth boundary. We currently do not have the oversight to appropriately monitor the fast-paced development in our city and address the particularities of our environmental reality. I know this personally, because my home has severe structural damage to the facade, the walls, and even my foundation from two development projects that are less than seven hundred feet from my home. The triassic basin soil that my home is built on must be dynamited up to twenty feet into the ground to find soil that is stable enough to build on, and I felt this dynamite twice just today, and I felt the floors and walls of my home shaking, and I see the cracks getting deeper and deeper every time it happens. So let us please be mindful of our ecosystem's natural limitations and address our development oversight issue before we add additional land to the urban growth boundary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I appreciate y'all's time and your work that's going into this thing. I'm just opposed to expanding the urban growth boundary for the Cheek, my name is Gary McLean, excuse me, and I'm a resident of Durham, and my address is on file. I'm just opposed to expanding the urban growth boundary. I live out in the Cheek Road and, and Redwood Road area, have lived there all of my life, and I just wanted to talk to you about the air and noise pollution and, and the problems that's going on in like other parts of southeast Durham, you can look at the pictures, I just don't really want that same thing going down my road. People over on Doc Nichols Road and everything, they're having to put up shower curtains on their porches to keep this dust and everything from just sandblasting their houses and their cars, and it's just problems. The farmers are having to use N-95 masks out, just when they're on tractors and everything, just trying to plow their land and mow grass and stuff, and so I just hope that y'all will just take all of this into consideration, and we could just slow this down just, you know, a little bit. True, we've got to get houses for everybody, but we don't have to do it today, you know, so I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Joyce Clemens, and I reside at six-six-zero-five Lee's Row. Their building sits hundred and, three hundred and fifty townhouses right next door to me, and then the blasting, they have caused my walls to crack, the light fixtures have blown out, broken up, my floors have highs and lows in them, my daughter is, has MS, and walks with a relator, she has difficulty walking on the floors, but the company says that the blasting did not cause any damage to my house, it wasn't there before. So they're telling me I need to get, what you call it? Civil engineer, to come, structure engineer, to come out and say that the blasting caused the damage. But why should it be my, on me, to pay the costs when they caused the damage? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Turntime, I'm a brick mason for forty-five years.
Say your name again, please.
Ma'am, Joe Turntime.
To sign up. He still needs to sign a card. Okay. Okay, any of you that's in that line that did not sign up, please sign a card so that we know who was here. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Back again, I'm Joe Turntime, I've been a brick mason for forty-five years, I was standing on behalf of Ms. Joyce about her foundation work, and you can see where the floors are humped over, and you can see where the, the cracks were expanding and then they're closed back up, it's just depending on the weather, you know, and, and rain. So I'm just saying that if people tear your stuff up, who's going to be responsible to pay for it when you don't have any money to pay for it? So that's all I'm doing, is just standing in the gap, and just want to make a difference in somebody else's life. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. My name is Tina Motley Pearson, I live at twenty-two oh five Olive Branch Road, and I want to talk a little bit about onsite wastewater treatment systems, also known as septic systems. So many of us think that septic systems are the primary reason for an increase in the nutrient load to Falls Lake, however, I'd like to point out that most single-family homes since nineteen seventy-eight that are on septic systems have very expensive, high-grade filter beds that are routinely monitored and inspected. Now, the watershed data and watershed analysis risk management framework, watershed modeling, my god, that's a mouthful, used for the Upper Neusever Basin Association also dispels that septic systems contribute to issues in Falls Lake. So if you take a look at those pie charts there, you're going to see that at the bottom, for the phosphorus from onsite wastewater systems, otherwise known as septic systems, it's only one percent, and the nitrogen from onsite wastewater systems, or septic systems, is only two percent. And this is the accumulative data from six counties and seven municipalities that make up UNRBA. So this brings us to the next slide. All right, on the left side, you're going to see that there are thousands of gallons of raw sewage from municipal systems that spill into the creeks and streams every year in Durham. Now, some of our scientists have been sampling some of the creeks in southeast Durham, and if you notice, the highest numbers of E coli are in Brightwood Trails at one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three MPN, and Olive Branch Road near Lockwood, which is two thousand, oh my gosh, four hundred and twenty MPN, and there are no septic systems in those two areas, they're only developments. So it's much lower where there is no development, and just so you know, the EPA standard is two hundred and thirty-five MPNs. So let's look at Durham's scientific data, your own data, and you're going to see in the red boxes here, for nitrogen, you're going to see that the sand filter discharge is only point seven percent for septic systems and... is only 0.7% for septic systems and 0.4%. So anyway, if Durham is environmentally progressive as we would like to be, we hope that you do not increase the urban growth boundary. Thank you so much.
Here's, here's your turn to answer the question. Me, I'm sorry. Good evening, and thank you all who have been out for a tour in southeast Durham. We sincerely really appreciate it. As people across this county speak tonight about their concerns, many have shared their personal stories due to masquerading, clearcutting, and blasting, which are the result of high-density development. We are asking you to please not increase the UGB, and please do not remove the future growth label off Kemp Road, which is adjacent to the critical watershed. There are many issues, but the lack of infrastructure and environmental damage are the top of the list. Durham City and County governments collectively pay $372,000 to be a member of the Upper Neuse River Basin Association, as we seek to protect Falls Lake along neighboring, along with neighboring counties. One neighboring county has recently created a new ordinance to protect their natural resources in Falls Lake watershed by recommending lot sizes in a conservation subdivision to be a minimum of .912 acres. This should be taken place and passed soon. Durham's data shows 40.7% of the nitrogen reaching the lake comes from developed land. 47.7% of the phosphorus reaching the lake is from stream bank erosion, not septic tanks. As we know, excessive nitrogen phosphorus can cause an overgrowth of algae. An NC State professor recently reported there is significant increase at the mouth of Lit Creek to algae biomass. Chlorophyll A is 45% higher, and total phosphorus increase are 27% from May 2010 to May 2023. This next slide shows the deposition in field directly all over Falls Lake, coming off Lit Creek, it's very obvious. This led to a Clean Water Act notice on February 3rd, 2023, where they asked for a UDO to be adopted and a comprehensive cumulative impact analysis to be done. Also, with the Southern Environmental Law Center on, 60-day notice was filed on May of 2023. This matter is still being reviewed and will be still in active case. Please do not extend the urban growth boundary, and please don't remove the future growth boundary around Kemp Road. It is in the critical watershed, adjacent to it. Falls Lake can't take anymore.
Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
Your time is up.
Good evening, Durham County Commissioners, Durham City Commissioners, oh, excuse me, Durham County Commissioners and City Council. My name is Donna Stainback, I live in Durham, I've been a lifelong member of Durham County. This slide is based on numbers presented by the Planning Department. The projected need is 60,000 new dwelling units for the 2050 population. The projected dwelling unit supply using the January through June UGB is 143,000 units. So that means we have an excess of 80,000 units. That is 138% of excess, or 238% of the planned demand. The 143,000 units give us room to significantly increase homeownership and generational wealth. In addition to the 143,000 units, RTP proposes to build an extra 40,000 units. If the dwelling units are consumed faster than projected, the UGB can be updated with the Planning Department reviews every two years or on-demand using the policies. Now, development growth, currently there are 152,500 housing units in Durham, but in the southeast area, over 17,400 new dwelling units have been approved or are pending. There is an additional 41,600 people. In the chart on the right, we break down the growth into watersheds and into approved 13,800 units and 3,600 units pending. So more than 23% of the 60,000 new units planned or needed for the 2050 are there, and have been approved in southeast Durham, and we only have the first responder minimal coverage for two locations, Fire Station Number Eight and Number Seventeen, and we do not have adequate fire coverage per Planning Department for Cheek.
Stand back, wrap up your, wrap up your conversation, your time is up. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Jacob Freeman, I reside at 6408 Aligula Terrace in Raleigh, North Carolina. So we've already heard much about the ongoing environmental destruction in southeastern Durham County within the watershed of Falls Lake, which is Raleigh's major source of drinking water, and I'd like to provide some more perspective. As shown in this slide, there's a massive amount of barren land that's been cleared with significant mass additional land where clearcutting and masquerading has been or will be proposed for development. So in this slide, I'd like to highlight the areas in the reddish-brown color. These are areas that have been or are currently undergoing simultaneous clearcutting and masquerading. I also like to point out there are two high-density developments which are very close, within about two miles or right against the critical watershed. You see the pictures presented to you, the sedimentation Lit Creek and how the Clean Water Act standards are allegedly not being met. This clearly shows the environmentally sensitive nature of triassic basin soils in the area, and what happens when they're stripped bare. These soils, coupled with the proposed density and landtopography and all the masquerading required for this density, are causing serious environmental issues. I think this picture tells a powerful story about how the watershed of Falls Lake in this area is being very negatively impacted. How much worse will it be if the Cheek, Redwood, and Patterson areas are expanded into the urban growth boundary and Kemp Road is removed from future growth area? Based on past performance, I think we all know the answer. This slide shows the critical watershed boundary and locations of three areas I previously discussed. As you can see, these areas are touching the critical watershed boundary. Changing designation of these areas would potentially place developments with up to 70% impervious surface bordering critical watershed areas according to FJB/EB designations for protective watershed versus six to nine impervious in the critical watershed FJA. Therefore, we request the urban growth boundary not be expanded in the Cheek, Redwood, and Patterson Road areas and the Kemp area, Kemp Road area not be removed from future growth area status. One critical question for me surrounding all this is, if we're interested in protecting the environment, why should we allow developments with high density and high impervious surface this close to the critical watershed? So I'd like to, with this slide, thank all the public officials that have visited the impacted areas southeast Durham to see for themselves the environmental destruction and the neighbors that have been severely impacted by the current development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person.
Brenda, my name is Talma Jelatin. And I got to start the day with you. I got to start the day with you this morning, so I'm hoping to start tonight. But anyway.
Did you fill out a card, Talma?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. I just wanted to express how much I appreciate the support the County Commission, County of Durham, has supplied to agriculture. I'm an advocate of agriculture, I've been doing agriculture for three-quarters of a century. And Mr. Turntine, that spoke a few minutes ago, his mother taught me everything I know about raising tobacco and planting tobacco and taking care of a farm, but I would like for y'all to consider the Redwood-Patterson Road area, I own farms on all three of them, and we can't maintain a farm if you put as many houses as you have on carbon the road. And I have a lot of gestures, conversation, when I get out at 7:00 in the morning on a tractor, it's got a 15-foot disc behind it, and I'm driving about five or six miles an hour down the Cheek Road, trying to get to a field to cultivate crops, there are a few people behind me that I can't see the end of this line of traffic that really don't like my fact that I'm there. I have had the sheriff come out at midnight and tell me to stop plying land because the neighbors could hear the tractor running and they couldn't sleep. But it's the thing that where agriculture and city bump together that creates a problem. The Commissioners have been so supportive, you've committed thousands of dollars to help agriculture, you've supported easements on agricultural land so it could never be anything but agriculture.
Your time is up.
Yeah, I can't stop on time.
Your time is up.
But anyway, please consider agriculture when you make decisions for all of these high-density houses.
Okay.
It's going to kill us.
Thank you.
But anyway, wonderful day. Thank you, Ms. Burns.
Okay, so, are you with that group?
I remember my name, but no, I'm not.
You're not with that group? Okay, so if you signed a card, we'll just pull your name through the list. Okay, go ahead.
All right. We'll call seven people, starting with Andrea Quinn, Kenan Conder, Scott Silvers, Angela And Mr. John Lloyd will be the last of that lineup.
Good afternoon to everyone on the daisies. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to come before you and share our concerns. I am an opponent of the urban boundary. I am representing the 8421 Farrington Mill Road family. I am also representing my family, who has been on that property, and my grandfather, James Nun, who was born in the early 1800s, who bought this property and has passed it down to three and four generations. So this property has been owned by my family for a long time. As the gentleman stated early on at the beginning of this meeting, when you remove this property from the boundaries, you are affecting our wealth. My grandfather came from slavery, he worked really hard to buy these 23 acres of land for his family, and we would like to continue the legacy. This property is in a triangle, we are minutes from Chatham County, we are minutes from Chapel Hill City, and we are minutes from the city of Durham. We have city water on my family property, but we do not have sewer services, and that is a service that we think we deserve. We have paid the taxes that have allowed us to be in the urban boundary, and we think we deserve to remain in that boundary. And I hope that you will look at what you're doing, and I respect the work that has been done by the City Planning Department, I know the efforts that they have put into that, but I also think you need to look at equity and inclusion when you're making these decisions, and you really need to speak to the families that would be affected. And my family is standing here today before you, and if they could all stand, and if you were willing to speak with us, we will come to you to have this conversation. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the family, and I look forward to further engagement and hope that you would take what has been said tonight into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Andrea Quinn, I'm representing 8409 Farrington Mill Road. I am also a descendant of James Nun Senior, and one of the things I wanted to, this historical part that we wanted to make sure that you understand, when we got this land, my grandfather passed it down to his children, and then his children passed it down to us, and right now we are fighting to have water. We have water, but we need sewer. We need sewer to live, we need that to have, I call it progression. Why can't we progress? Why can't we have water and sewer, just like everybody around us? We live kind of in like a donut, and we're in between, and everybody's building, building, and building, and they're leaving us out. We deserve prosperity, we deserve our land to be built on, we deserve to pass our land down to our children. I have, I have on four and a half acres right now, and right now, the way it's set up, the state has me on this glorified system, which I have to, cost me back in 1984, which has been 43 years I've had this, it's breaking down, guys, 43 years of this glorifying system, and sewer is seeping up, and we have people that stood up, have water and have sewer seeping up from the ground. We don't, we deserve, we deserve sewer. We don't deserve to have sewers bubbling up and around. We got grandchildren, we got animals, so come on, let's get us sewer. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, and members of the Board of County Commissioners. My name is Kenan Conder, and I live at 610 West Morgan Street here in Durham. I'm an attorney for Morningstar Law Group, and I'm representing the owners of the 81 acres in the Patterson Road District. I'd like to talk about the urban growth boundary and how it's particularly harmful in this case. The owners of this area are currently in, this area is currently in the suburban tier, but unfortunately, as a result of the current placement of the urban growth boundary, land that would be currently be available for development into much-needed residences, through the normal process of annexation, rezoning, and administrative review, may soon not be developable for decades to come, which will rob us of the potential for valuable, very needed housing. These properties are bordered on three sides by area that is still within the urban growth area, and additionally, these properties are within a five-minute drive from a Food Lion, a Walgreens, a Dollar General, Neil Middle School, and, you know, and elementary school as well. This is exactly where we want to build residences if we're going to maintain a 15-minute city that reduces the carbon emissions of our residents, of our drivers, of our commuters, and given that we need to build, as a city, 60,000 new homes to accommodate 160,000 new residences, you're not going to find a better location than this. These are large parcels, and large parcels afford themselves well towards mixed-use development that we all want, and that certainly is what we as a city would like to develop. Additionally, I understand there may be some infrastructure challenges, but those are current, and given the size of the properties that are in this district, is almost assured that a member of the private sector, a member of the development community would be willing to step in and provide that much-needed infrastructure at no cost to the city. So to summarize, we would hope that we can preserve the existing suburban tier line and keep the properties within the Patterson Road area within the urban growth area. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Scott Silvers, my address is of record. I'm an attorney, my client is Jack Smith LLC, it owns 80 acres of land right next to Patterson Road. I want to let you know that this LLC is wholly owned by women who are of retirement age, that is to say that they are, it is wholly owned by women who are in their mid to late 60s. I'm here tonight pro bono to give them a voice, there's going to be a lot of voices tonight, to give them a voice and provide you with a little insight of how your decisions may impact them. They took a substantial amount of their savings and invested it in this property, intending it to use, intending to use it as a nest egg during their retirement years. It is at a spot, you just heard Kenan, it is a spot that is close, and it's been developed all around, three minutes away from Walgreens, three minutes away from Food Lion, five minutes away from the elementary school, and 15 minutes from the RTP. Removing this land from the urban growth area would severely decrease the value of this property. As you heard an earlier speaker say, these landowners have already been paying taxes because, as part of the suburban tier. So I want to emphasize, this is already in the suburban tier, you'd be removing it from the urban growth area. My client has already been contacted by developers who have told them that they would be willing to install a water pump at their cost, and my contention is that development brings more support to the communities and more infrastructure. I would contend that would be the case here. Of all the properties that I've viewed in the plan, the Patterson Road property makes the least sense to me for why it would be removed, given its proximity to all the other developed area. In closing, among all your other considerations, I ask that you also consider the owners of the land. These are not large corporations, these are not millionaires speculating on land, they are hard-working people who have put their savings into this property.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is William P. Few, 2621 Dover Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm the president of Kendrick Estates Investment Corporation, which is a family corporation and is the owner of 218 acres on the western side of Farrington Mill Road. Our property, along with the Nun family, properties are proposed to be removed from the urban growth boundary in southwest Durham. Our property has been in the suburban tier. Our property has been in the suburban tier since the comprehensive was, plan was adopted 18 years ago. We've relied on the ability to service the property with water and sewer and develop the property under the suburban tier of the comprehensive plan for decades. Our property is ideally located for residential development. It's 10 minutes from South Point Mall, seven minutes from the University of North Carolina, 14 minutes from the Research Triangle Park. It checks all the boxes of a 15-minute community of the new comprehensive plan. The only reason offered for removal of our property from the urban growth boundary is that it would be complicated and expensive for the city to extend sewer lines to the property. In fact, the development plan for our property filed with the zoning application in November 2022 provides that sewer will be installed and paid for by the owner, developer, not by the city of Durham. A city water line and fire hydrants are already in place in Farrington Mill Road, as you know. The extension of sewer to Farrington Mill Road would service not only our property, but also the Nun family properties that you've heard from tonight, and perhaps others who also have failing septic systems and reduce property values. People with families don't necessarily want to live in a high-rise downtown with little or no open space. Our property is close to employment centers and is a good residential alternative to high-rise living or long commutes.
Your time is, your time has expired, sir. Your time is up.
Ideally-located property from the urban growth boundary does not make sense.
Thank you, thank you. So any, so anyone that has not signed up in the next three minutes cannot sign up. We will not accept, because these cards keep growing. So no more three minutes, and we'll have to, we'll have to cut it off.
How you doing? I'm Ricky Cates, I own the land at 2523 2503 Hamlin Road. It's over 40 acres of land there. The property is currently in the suburban-tier area. Based on the current proposal of the new urban-tier map, my property would be bordered in the urban-tier area. I'm requesting my two tracts of property be included in the new urban-growth area. The land is, the land in this area is not favorable for perk sites, and without access to sewer, it limits any houses on the property. The property currently has city water paid for, road fund is over 1,500 feet, that's been paid for by the landowner. Natural gas and high-speed internet. Approximately a year ago, I had C3 design and engineer survey the property, and they advised, based off the lay of the land, part of the property would flow naturally to the existing nearby sewer lines in the area. I've also been contacted by developers in the past that was looking to develop property in this area, which at that time I declined. This property is located within four minutes of Duke Regional Hospital and multiple shopping centers on North Foxborough Street. Most of the land to the west of this property is industrial park. The planning board and the city commissioners just voted and approved for the development of Enova Venture Industrial Park, which is located on Hamlin Road, less than a half mile from this property. Also, the future northern Durham Parkway would be almost within sight of this property. When I purchased this property 12 years ago, I considered the possible future growth based on the fact it was in the suburban tier and it already had city water. If I would have known that, if I would have known that I would not have access to the sewer or any future growth, I would not have purchased the property at that time. On June 13, 2023, the commission did vote 7 to 4 in a straw poll to include this property into the new urban-growth boundary, but their final vote didn't include any changes to the map. Please take this information into consideration and include my property in the new urban-growth area, and do not remove my property from the future access to sewer. If my property is included in the new urban-growth area, it doesn't mean I'm going to do mass development. Having access to water and sewer does help in using the property for different options in the future. Like, I already have the water to the property that I paid for. I think it makes sense for me to have also access to sewer. Thank y'all for helping.
Thank you.
I'm John Lloyd, reside at 223 Argon Drive. One question I have, if you don't mind my asking, and good evening, Mayor, and council members and commissioners. How many live north of I-85? Just out of curiosity. Very good, we have two. Back in 1991, when I was on the city council, I was the only person that lived north of I-85, so I appreciate the fact that we represented well now. The balance of infrastructure and development is something that you're saddled with as our elected officials. The comprehensive plan is something you put in place to kind of give you an idea of how we are in that balance, and I would argue, since the street, quiet residential street I lived on is now the main, one of the main entrances to the new Northern High School, it's not quite as quiet as it was. And there's Black Meadow Ridge Development, which I signed up to speak to at the Board of Adjustment Hearings, and apparently, they stopped notifying me of the meeting, and something got settled. I don't know what it was, because I wasn't at the meeting. But anyway, I would argue, let's leave the growth boundary as it is and let individual pockets that want changes come to you individually and deal with it on a case-by-case basis, rather than doing it all in one as a, as one fell swoop. I mean, it makes more sense that way, and then you can weigh the public good, which is what you're supposed to be looking at, rather than just looking at the owners at the time. It makes more sense to me. As an open disclosure item, I looked at all 248 pages of this document today, and it reads like a planning textbook. It didn't give me any of the information I wanted. The maps are so small, I couldn't tell if my house was in it. I couldn't find the streets. I called the planning department, they took me to the website, but you need a big map to figure out where, where you are in this.
Sir, you need to wrap, you need to wrap up your statement, your time has expired.
But thank you very much for what you do. I know it's a lot of fun.
Thank you. Okay. The next seven, Samantha Cropp, Selena Hemmerger, Jackie Wagstaff, Danielle Doeman, Becky Winder, Larissa Seiber.
Krista Bissaw.
Krista?
Krista.
Okay. He got it. Robin Barefoot.
Hello, thank you so much for your time. For the record, my name is Samantha Cropp. I am not a Durham resident, but through my work as the Noose River Keeper with Sound Rivers, I spend a lot of time in the city of Durham and Durham County, doing my work of water quality monitoring and water quality advocacy. I wanted to share some of the things that I've learned through doing this work today. Most importantly, my most recent takeaway in the over year that I have been spending in Lit Creek Watershed in southeast Durham County, has been that while on paper Durham has some of the most protective environmental standards, unfortunately, in practice, things often look very different. In fact, Durham's UDO mandates 100-foot buffers alongside perennial creeks in the Falls/Jordan B overlay. However, I learned recently that the city of Durham often allows for variances of these, of these buffers. Specific examples are that the city of Durham allowed for a single developer to cut within that 100-foot buffer, actually within that state-required 50-foot buffer, and in some places, all the way up to a creek, in over 118,000 square feet of streamside, which equaled about 2.7 acres for just one development. So while the rules also state that while wetlands are required to be protected, the city of Durham granted a single developer for a single development to destroy half an acre of wetlands on this one site. So while, again, it does seem that there are very strong environmental protections on paper, I am not seeing those protections always playing out in practice. And the results are evident. Approximately 65% of waters that I have sampled from across the Lit Creek Watershed this year did not meet the required water quality standards. This is a sample that I grabbed today from Lit Creek, adjacent to a developer, and for those who will argue that this is the natural state of things, this is a sample from a nearby stream that was not impacted by development. This is not natural, and this is not inevitable. I have had the opportunity to speak with many locals who have told me that they've seen these creeks run clear, and I believe them. Thank you so much for your time. Please make sure that development can come with the promise of clean water.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Danielle Doeman, and my address is on record. I'm a Durham resident. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Coalition on Affordable Housing and Transit. And to realize the plan's good intentions of equitable development, the coalition asks you all to affirm a community-wide, public and private commitment and expectation that Durham will maintain housing opportunities for those who are rooted in the community by employment and by heritage, but are losing out to wealthier newcomers and who are in competition with them for housing. Durham expects developers to address the social impacts of their projects, just as they address the infrastructure and environmental impacts. We also expect elected officials to make wide, wise use of government permitting authority and public funds, our funds, to address critical housing needs and infrastructure problems generated by new development and redevelopment. Coalition members would like to see also a clear and measurable goal for a percentage of housing units in new developments to be affordable. For now, we call for housing equity indicators to be developed through an equitable engagement process as one of the first implementation steps for the plan. As part of the Community Goals and Objectives Report Card, these indicators should be used to hold the city and county accountable for the objectives and goals of the plan, and to learn about what works and adjust mid-course if that's needed. In time, Durham should move towards consensus on fair standards for affordability that will provide clear and predictable guidance to developers, city staff, and elected officials.
Ma'am, what was, ma'am, what was your name again?
Danielle Doeman.
Thank you. The other two, yeah, you were, was Selena Hemmerger, and then Jackie Wagstaff. Selma.
We are actually a group presentation too, and we, you called us out.
I did. The, these, these two individuals were before you. If they're not going to speak, that's fine, I just need to know.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Madam Chairwoman. I heard a lot of things tonight, and, oh, I'm Jacqueline Wagstaff. I live in Durham, and I don't want my address on file, because there's some people up here might use it for fraudulent reasons. You know who. I heard a lot of things tonight, and I agree with the people that was asking not to have their properties included in the urban tier of the new plan. And you should listen to them. If I was on this diocese, there would be one thing tonight that would make my mind up about this plan. That little young girl right there that said, "All of this is going to affect her life." Because I'm 65, so, you know, she's got a lot of stuff to do. I'm done. But I just wanted to say that, you know, we hear, we hear a lot of things in this room, and when you have council members that make statements like, you know, "People don't want houses. They want to live in apartments and townhouses." Something about that does not make sense to me. Now, they may can explain why they make those statements, but it doesn't make sense to me. And I think when you're looking at red water, where's that lady with that red water? You should have gave it to one of them and told them to take a sip of it. See, because they won't come out there and actually witness what's going on, because as long as you don't witness it, you can live in denial. And that's what's happening. We got a lot of denial up here. Now, some of these people are going out there, but this plan has to be thoughtful. It has to be, you have to look at everything that's said today, and you have to put it into perspective where it works for everybody. And then it was a gentleman that said that we have a housing problem. No, we don't. We have an affordability problem. We don't have a housing problem. But I'm leaving it there.
Thank you, ma'am. Now Becky.
With your group presentation, can you ask everybody to come up that's going to be presenting?
One more, and then we have one online. But, and we don't, we don't have a PowerPoint. They, we're, their, their presentation was much more developed and, and better than ours, but I don't want to waste time. My name is Becky Winders, and I live at 4 Glenmore Drive, and I'm following up on Danielle Doeman. We, that, we really like the, the, for the Affordable, Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit. We like what is in the plan, and we're concerned about, our concern is that you all, you know, know what's in there and actually use it to guide your decisions. And we do have, and Danielle, we, we have a community vision that we spent three or four years, you know, developing, and, and we would like for you to use it. And so we do have some suggestions for final editing, which I understand, without going back and starting over practically, we have time to do that, that we would like to see affordable housing put in the, more in the growth management part of the plan, in particular, the place types in our vision of what is a, a growth opportunity area. That should include not just that you, that, except mixed uses and, and walkability and ability to get somewhere in 15 minutes, but it, it should have some affordable housing in every place that has access to transit, at least. And by affordable, we mean the legal HUD-type definition, although we know that you need to do more. We, we, so, we dispute the idea that increased density or reduced restrictions automatically reduces housing costs, and we think whenever, whenever restrictions are released, there should be an expect, expectation that some house, some affordable housing is included in it, because you don't have equity if you don't have affordable housing.
Yeah, thank you, your time's up.
Good evening. My name is Larissa Seibel, 2410 Par Place in Durham, and I'm also with the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit, and we think there's some highlights in the comprehensive plan that the staff have written in, which encourages density that is going to allow for affordable housing, but density is not all you need. You also need to have walkable neighborhoods. You need to be able to live close to transit. So we advocate for both affordable housing and transit, and the staff has some strong ways of doing that. One thing we do want to emphasize is that housing affordability should continue to be defined as housing for people with incomes below 30% of area meeting income, very low-income people, and at 50% area median income for renters, it's really important to have those rental homes that are affordable for working people. And right now, people are having an extremely difficult time, even if you have a voucher, to find anything affordable as a working person. And then I also wanted to point out that the Housing Authority Director on Saturday spoke to us in the library and said that they would have funds for people at 30% area median income people from public housing, but they didn't have the money to create housing for people who are in the next income level above that, people who are working folks, firefighters, our other emergency personnel, our teachers, especially starting teachers, the people who take care of us in hospitals, who are not making big salaries. We need to have that housing for people at that income level, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larissa. Thank you, Larissa.
Is there a member of their team online or you calling me up?
Oh, you're next.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, Ms. Howerton, members of the council and the commissioners. My name's Robin Barefoot. My address is on record. And you have a lot of competing interests to try to adjudicate, and I respect the work that that's going to take. And I think actually the comprehensive plan may be a huge distraction from that kind of county management. Long-protected watersheds are breached and violated. Creeks and rivers are polluted. Wake and Granville County are caucusing about Durham's dereliction of its duty to Falls Lake. A federal lawsuit has been noticed, and the action in which I am a plaintiff is against Durham County is on appeal to the North Carolina Court of Appeals. Agricultural and heritage natural lands are ravaged. Thousands of acres of old-growth woodlands and neighborhood tree canopy are irreversibly deforested. Residents are suffering extensive damage to their homes from blasting. Damage to foundations, wells, septic systems is denied, unaddressed, and uncompensated by the developers, the blasting companies, and the residents' homeowners' insurance. Fire, police, and safety services are demonstrably inadequate for our current population, much less the anticipated growth. And personnel are leaving those agencies every week. Housing inventory exceeds what we need by 2050, and we still do not have affordable housing. And we rely on Habitat for Humanity to build that housing for us. So, our capitalism requires our nonprofits to step in and breach the gap. Until Durham's elected and appointed officials and its staff, including management of staff, can find the political will and the capacity and the mechanisms to legislate, regulate, oversee, and enforce accountability of the development that it allows, it should not allow the development. It's great for us to develop Durham, but not the way it's being done now. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, Kristof Boschov. I'm managing member of the entity that owns up to 300 acres in the Redwood-Creek Road area that is being proposed or is now recommended by the city to be back included, included back into the UGA. It is currently inside the UGA. And just wanted to add, we bought our first parcel in December 2005 and acquired additional adjoining parcels over the years. And from the beginning, we were included in the Durham UGA. Had been promised connections to water and sewer by Durham personnel, made our investments accordingly. These promises were reiterated over the years with agreement that we would pay for the connection costs. My wife and I are not wealthy. Matter of fact, my wife has passed away three years ago. She worked very hard with us to take any little bit of money we had to buy property in Durham. We wanted to invest in Durham. We believed in Durham. And I just want to let you know, we are humans too, with real families, with struggles to survive. And it was sad. Well, while it seemed like Durham was talking to the neighbors, trying to accommodate them, my wife was fighting for her life. She ultimately died in 2020, leaving behind two teenage kids, myself, to navigate life. We don't have much. We never had much. Just imagine having a government take away your retirement, your social security, take away your ability to take care of your kids. I just want you to consider this. We have bad soils on Cheek Road. I've been in environmental consulting for over 30 years. Failing septic systems, contaminated wells, you're not going to fix it unless you bring water and sewer to that area. And bad soils, no septic, our property is valueless, to the point that it's going to be probably less than what we invested in for. I just want you to take that in consideration. We all hate construction.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, but your time is up. Thank you so much.
All right, we're going to call three additional names before we take a break at the nine o'clock hour. We'll take a break about as soon as these three additional speakers come forth. Ms. Stella Adams, Mr. Neil Goesch, and Ms. Katie Ross. And they will lead us into a brief recess after they speak. And just to give you an idea of who the next persons will be, it'll be Ms. Barbara Priceo, Randy Few, Patrick Strickland, Beatrice Forsthyth, and Michael Rowe, Patrick Biker. If you all will be ready when we come back from break.
Madam Mayor, Madam Chair, Council and Commission. My name is Stella Adams. Oh, I'm going to do what everybody else does. My address is on record. I came here tonight supporting the comprehensive plan, but there have been concerns raised that I have to raise to you. The Nun property is historic African-American land. And if there's water and sewer circling that land, there's an inequity built in, a historic inequity built into that process. So, and as a former soil and water supervisor, that trick she pulled, I did it first in front of the county commissioners some 30 years ago. But I made them try to drink it. Now, so there are conflicts here between the residents who have need of water and sewer and need those services, and the folks who need to preserve their land's worth and the agriculture. I'm always stand up for rural and agricultural communities, and I see it, and safe, sound drinking water. Always going to do that. But we have, there is a way. There is a middle way. And that is not to lock in stone those boundaries, that boundary, and to do, examine it on a case-by-case basis. But you need to get water to the people whose wells are ruined, and you need to get sewer to the people who need sewer. Thank you.
Good night, I guess, everyone. My name is Neil Goesch. I'm an attorney at the Morningstar Law Group, 700 West Main Street here in Durham. And I'm here on behalf tonight of the Nun and Quinn family, if you would please stand, who you just heard about and who you heard from earlier. I first heard of them when they spoke at the Planning Commission meeting in February. And I was so moved by what they said that I said to myself, I've got to find out who those people are. I got to make sure their voices are heard because in large part, I was very disappointed that the Planning Commission seemed to ignore their voices. Now, they're not paying me a dime, and they shouldn't have to, because as I told them, there's nothing I can say that's going to have more impact than what you heard from them directly. So, I'm going to take a different tact here. Let me first say that I think the Planning Department has done a wonderful job fulfilling the task that you gave them, which was a very difficult one. They have given you a draft of a comprehensive plan that is based in, for the most part, on sound planning principles. Now, some people, including myself, might argue about those planning principles, but I don't want to do that tonight because what you all, the elected officials, have before you is a much different task. You cannot just simply look at sound planning principles and make your decision. You have to respond to all the citizens. And it's been said before, but I think the Nun family's story, one of those things that you all have to consider resonates with their story, that's equity. They have about 25 acres, and on those 25 acres, I think there's something like five houses. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out. That's not very efficient. Ms. Quinn told me directly that she was given this land by her father with the expectation that she would be able to pass it on to her children. She's got one house on four and a half acres, and that's all she can ever have if she never gets that sewer. I think the only purpose of vote to keep, to kick this area out of the UGB serves would be to spit on their family tree. And frankly, I know that you all can do better than that. I know you can. You are better than that. So, 10 seconds left. Do better.
Hello. Katie Ross from Bahama. So, I'm just going to astound you with stuff you've never heard. No, I'm not, because I don't think anybody up here has not heard all the different sides and probably has a pretty good idea of where each of you as individuals want to go. I'm going to talk about something that I have heard alluded to from the poor people that have suffered from their, from the blasting, from their wells collapsing, from their foundations being cracked. And that is the burden that is being placed on them to come forward. And as some of you had said, why don't you prove what the damages have been? I don't often talk about my 45 years of practicing law because I'm retired now. And I've retired because I don't want to have to talk about practicing law. But to say to people that have had these kinds of damages, why don't you go prove that those damages are from the blasting even though there may be 10 houses that are reporting the same thing? Do you think that civil engineer is going to come out for free? Do you think an attorney is going to come out and say, hey, for you, I waived my $500 an hour fees or my $5,000 or $10,000 retainer? To prove those cases like that, and corporations and developers and blasting companies, they deny liability because their insurance companies tell them to, their lawyers tell them to, and they know that by denying liability, the average citizen does not have the resources to get the expertise and the legal representation that they need. And that's why I have urged a pause before. That's why I think before you allow more of this to go on, that you fix that, that you give them a way to have recourse and to get reparations without having to spend all of their savings and their life savings. So, that's just another thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
10-minute break, everybody.
So, we'll go 10-minute break. We'll be back. As I say, we'll be back.
It's game time, and the recycling champs take to the field.
Let's see their moves.
This is some bold play calling. It'll pay off.
To the trash can for the plastic cup.
That's a tricky one.
Garden hose to the trash.
Ooh, nice move.
Only loose items in recycle carts, no plastic bags.
Visit the Durham Waste Disposal and Recycling Center at East Club Boulevard to drop off paint cans, electronics, tires, and more. We all win when we recycle right Durham.
So, how much of that $130 billion did the City of Durham actually get?
So, surprisingly, the City of Durham was awarded $51 million in funding, and Durham County was actually allocated 61 million. And it was really focused on, you know, how do we deal with public health issues, address negative economic impacts on our community, provide premium pay for our employees who would continue to provide services during the pandemic, as well as invest in water, sewer, and broadband services.
So, a variety of projects could benefit from this money, huh?
Yes, cities were given a lot of flexibility within those categories.
One of the many ways we'll continue to provide educational and cultural services in the coming year is through our support of the Museum of Durham History. The museum features online exhibits as well as those that can be found in its physical building at 500 West Main Street in downtown. Its goal is to rotate exhibits that showcase as many threads from Durham's past as possible. The museum does this by using stories about Durham's people and places to foster an understanding of and appreciation for our community's rich history and journey to where we are today and where we're headed in the future. Last year, nearly 14,000 people visited the museum and participated in its educational opportunities and exhibits. To help the museum continue to provide its services, we'll pay just over $76,000 towards salary and operating support in the coming year. More information can be found at museumofdurhamhistory.org.
All right, everybody. It's time to come back to session. Yes, I do. Courtney. All right. All right, everybody. If we could gather back, we will go ahead and get started with our next speakers. Yeah, but we had to take somebody out, and I added somebody else in, because somebody else sat there. These are the ones we're getting ready. Mr. Randy Few, Ms. Petra Strickland, Beatrice Forsyth, Patrick Biker, Christina Lingley, and Mallory McCall. All right.
Recording in progress.
Ms. Preisel, P-R-E-I-S-L. Is she back in the room? Oh, yes, ma'am. You're ready.
Sasan? Yes. Thank you very much for hearing me. I'm not a public speaker, but I am a homeowner. I live in the North Durham County, over in your Area 1. And please keep that out of the UGB. It's a rural community. There's a lot of farms. There's a lot of produce out there. Lake Mickey is in your watershed area. It has environmental factors. The infrastructure for these large developments is not there. There's 501 to get in and out of. You put in new communities with 100 or 200 homes, we can't handle that. We can't handle all of the water, the sewer, the roads, and all the other necessities. There is not a bus service up there. There is not the transportation. So, I'm not going to take up a lot of your time, but please consider these factors when you're looking at that area. It really needs a close and careful consideration. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, Beatrice Forsyth. Y'all have my address. Beatrice Forsyth. I'm here to talk about land on Patterson Road in Durham that our family and I inherited from our aunt. We would like to sell the property to benefit us in the future. Governor Cooper has done a great job recruiting businesses to relocate to North Carolina, as well as promoting new businesses to the area. Some of these businesses are in the RTP, and employees will need to find homes relatively close to jobs. Patterson Road crosses over to Sharon Road, which brings you to Highway 70, and then South Miami Boulevard. South Miami Boulevard brings you into the Research Triangle Park. We do not want our property removed from the urban growth boundary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. Petra Strickland. That was my sister. And yeah, I'm just here to say that we do not want our property removed from the urban boundary. It'll devalue our property. As the gentleman earlier said, the property on Patterson Road where he's at is fairly close to the road as far as food lines, CVS, and all those areas. Ours is even closer. You could do a 10-minute walk. If we're removed from the boundary, that's going to be a financial hardship for several relatives in the family. And I sent you an email, so I've got a long story. I hope y'all all read it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Randy Few, longtime Durham resident. The urban growth boundary is been proposed to be reduced by some 10.8 square miles. Apparently, 3/4 of the affected landowners have no qualms with the proposal, don't fully understand the implications of the proposal, or don't know about the proposal at all. I believe that most of you elected officials now have a recognition of the very different paths that were taken in the creation of the Policy Section of the Comprehensive Plan versus the UGB part. The equitable engagement process, an integral part of the Policy Section creation, may not have been perfect, but it was in stark contrast to the methods used in deciding the urban growth boundary. This was a top-down process that would have been familiar to the implementers of yesteryear's urban renewal. It's a shame that the lessons from that era were forgotten or ignored when addressing today's UGB. Focusing now on the Farrington Mill Road property, as if much more needs to be added after the nuns, but I will say this. This area meets so many of the stated desires of the possible communities outlined in the Comprehensive Plan. Close proximity to employment, 18 minutes to Duke, 14 to RTP, 7 to UNC. Shopping and other services are five minutes away. There are North Carolina-maintained trails within walking distance of the area. A 16-inch water main is already in place along Farrington Mill Road, and a sewer solution that does not require the use of any existing lift station or city participation is planned and is working its way through the approval process. It is adjacent to the city limits, and Fire Station 16 is just over two miles away from the area. I ask that the county commissioners recommend that the Farrington Mill Road area remain in the urban growth boundary, and I ask that the city council vote to have the Farrington Mill Road area remain within the urban growth boundary.
Thank you, sir.
Very much.
I apologize. Have to clear the screen here.
Good evening. Chair Howerton, Mayor O'Neill, Durham elected officials. My name is Patrick Biker. I live at 2614 Stewart Drive. I'm an attorney with Morningstar Law Group, and I'm here tonight representing my friend and client, Adam Abram, who owns 82 acres in what is called Arrowhead. Tonight, I want to give a short historic overview of Durham's leadership in our region when it comes to watershed protection. The first major controversy I was involved with in Durham was the adoption of our watershed protection ordinance back in 1995. I want to emphasize that the development community supported establishing a one-mile critical area for Durham City and County, even though the state requirement was only one-half of a mile. That extra half mile of critical area means that we protect more than 33 square miles of Durham County above what the state requires. But what about our neighboring counties? Our neighbors are nowhere close to the degree of environmental protection that Durham provides. So, we are the smallest county, setting aside the largest percentage of our land area for water supply protection, which means Durham has relatively little land compared to our neighboring counties to expand our supply of housing. Speaking of housing, how is our region doing on affordability these days? Not so good. Here's a recent headline from August 22 on wral.com. But this slide does not tell you anything you didn't already know. So, what does this history of Durham's leadership on watershed protection and the current affordability crisis mean in regard to why we're here tonight, the location of the urban growth boundary? It means that the boundary for urban growth that was first adopted in the 1990s and then re-adopted in the 2005 Comprehensive Plan should remain in place, since today's suburban tier is the appropriate urban growth boundary. Besides the 2005 suburban tier, please note that Arrowhead has over 500 acres that are not in any watershed protection overlay, and we propose to include only 82 acres of Arrowhead in the urban growth boundary. It has straightforward access to water and sewer, nearby schools, and underutilized roads for a short commute to Durham's largest employer, Duke University. Please support this location of the UGB going forward. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Okay, so, is Ms. McCall here? Or Lingley? Okay.
Ms. Mallory McCall. Christina Lingley. Followed by Bill Costello. David Durrock, Iraq. I have someone that said 3209 Jennifer Drive. Did not put their name. Judson Needa Byrne will be our next person's up.
So, we need you to go to get in line and give us your name, if that's your address.
Ms. McCall. And Ms. Lingley, you will be the first two. And if you would just state your name before you begin to speak.
Hi, my name is Christina Falcone Lingley. Born and raised in Durham for 35 years, and we've been and lived in Arrowhead all that time. We've been following the Engage Durham process the entire time and appreciate the level of engagement of the planning staff, commissioners, and council members. We would like to thank the planning staff and Planning Commission for their extensive efforts in developing the new plan with input from the community stakeholders, and for outlining the procedural channels for proposing changes. Following along the meetings and work sessions this summer confirmed the public transparency part of the process was vital in informing residents of what topics were in discussion and allowing their voices to be heard. We strongly support the Comprehensive Plan recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on tonight's agenda, in which Arrowhead remains in the rural and agricultural designation. A proposal for individual parcels in the UGB should require the same access for transparency and be rejected for consideration. The draft-placed height map should be accepted as is. A late proposal to a change needs to go back to planning staff and the Planning Commission to consider impact to the area. I ask all those in the room who support the Arrowhead area as rural and agricultural to raise their hand as we speak tonight. Thank you so much for your time. I'd grab a cup of coffee for you off if I could.
I do have a name. It's Penny Sparassino, 3209 Jennifer Drive. Penny Sparassino. When I get through?
Uh-huh. Yes, ma'am. You can meet speakers.
Okay. Care for Durham. Conserve Arrowhead's rural environment was created by a group of residents in the Arrowhead and immediate surrounding area who believed the guiding principles of the new Comprehensive Plan. The plan, as recommended by the Planning Commission, strikes an appropriate balance between accommodating growth and preserving the natural environment and Durham's rural character. We support the current draft plan. A proposal to expand the urban growth boundary into a portion of Arrowhead is inconsistent with plan policies and does not reflect surrounding community needs. Throughout the stakeholder engagement process, a majority of residents have expressed support for a plan that keeps Arrowhead rural and agricultural for various reasons. And the proposal to expand the UGB does not comply with at least 14 policies deemed important in considerations of development. And now, this is going to sound confusing, because I was a little bit taken aback by a proposal made tonight by a previous speaker, so bear with me. Historically, 2005 Comprehensive Plan placed Arrowhead in the rural tier outside the UGB. Now, one landowner owning 82 acres out of 500 acres of the land has made a request to be included in the UGB. This does not represent the interests of the community, nor does this request reflect a balanced consideration of community goals necessary for Durham's growth management strategy. For context, such a request is only one person proposing an increase to the size of the UGB. And I want to be sure that I have down here something else I wrote down. I've got to go quick. The requested map change for Arrowhead is in direct conflict with the Comprehensive Plan as recommended, and the proposal is not in alignment with the-- Ma'am, your two minutes are up. Got it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Malora McCall at 4406 Curly Road. Policy 166 within the recommended draft Comprehensive Plan specifically outlines when it may be appropriate to extend the UGB. The policy is clear and direct as to what a requister must put forth to substantiate a proposal. The proposed change to include Arrowhead meets none of the criteria listed in Policy 166 within the Comprehensive Plan. Policy states the proponent must demonstrate all three of the following. First, the change does not expand the UGB further into a critical watershed. The City of Durham Critical Area Protection Plan, March 2021, for New Hope Creek identified two Keystone reparions in Arrowhead out of 23 within the county, as well as additional repairian properties that were included in the land proposed just this evening. Keystone properties are the highest priority parcels identified for protection in each watershed. Two, the change does not significantly increase long-term infrastructure maintenance costs for the city or county. Durham City Water Management has found that the necessary upgrades to the sewer system would be extremely expensive, and all other infrastructure systems would require build-out to support a proposal in Arrowhead. Three, a change would address a clear need for a community based on the adopted Comprehensive policies. At no point has a proponent articulated a clear need for the community based on the policies of the Comprehensive Plan. To date, only generalized statements have been made in support of the UGB expansion without any regard for those living in and immediately surrounding the Arrowhead area. Further, this is now the second time in which a proposer has suggested the UGB extend into Arrowhead, and they have yet to demonstrate all three criteria are met. Such a proposal undermines other established goals and objectives found throughout the plan, and growth of the area should remain consistent with the rural and agricultural designation. And the proposal for UGB expansion into Arrowhead does not meet necessary criteria as outlined in Policy 166. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bill Costello. I live on Cornwallis Road, and I live in the Arrowhead community, and I've been there, gosh, probably about 12 years now. We have a well-designed Comprehensive Plan as a guidebook of principles and values outlined in front of us. This document was developed with input from our city's professional planning development staff, thank you, and the community, expressing what matters most to them. Engage Durham created an equitable-- Engage Durham created an equitable engagement process to collaboratively create a comprehensive plan. That process should be honored, not ignored. The planning staff have carefully evaluated the Arrowhead area and confirmed that the persistence of the rural and agricultural designation continues to be most appropriate. This last-minute map change request has lost its footing. Why? For several reasons. First, it's not supported by existing infrastructure, as previously noted, and would require significant public investment. Second, the staff's research and conclusions have been reinforced by unanimous votes from the Planning Commission. Third, because of feedback and support from the Joint County Commission, this area has not been discussed at subsequent work sessions. Its lack of inclusion on agendas, including tonight's, indicated the ongoing public opposition was not necessary as part of the adoption process. It's clear that this requested map change is not in alignment with community needs as outlined in the policies of the comprehensive plan. Reintroduction of this topic at the final meeting is really in opposition to the spirit of community engagement. So thank you for taking the time to listen to our concerns, and we appreciate what you do. So, thank you.
My name is Judson Ettenburn. I live at 4110 Curly Road. The comprehensive plan seeks to meet community needs with policies that direct growth towards infill and discourage sprawling development. The entire Arrowhead area should be classified, continue to be classified, as rural agriculture as it supports both these priorities while also contributing to the quality of life for all citizens of Durham County. Also, Arrowhead borders and thus buffers sensitive natural heritage areas of the Duke Forest Teaching and Research Laboratory where I worked for 35 years. A recent North Carolina Natural Heritage Program report scored the Arrowhead area high in priority because of protected species found within the Duke Forest and likely in the Arrowhead area. Arrowhead borders establish rural buffers in Durham and Orange County, and keeping Arrowhead out of the UGB is consistent with information from a number of reports, including the New Hope Corridor Open Space Master Plan, the Landscape Plan for Wildlife Habitat Connectivity in the Eno River and New Hope Creek Watersheds, a landscape analysis of wildlife habitat connectivity for Durham County, and information on natural heritage resources in the area as documented by the Natural Heritage Program, and as well as policies that are outlined within the comprehensive plan. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
I'm Ken Pugh. I reside at 3503 West Cornwallis, and I'd like to speak to a few points. First, the New Hope Creek Corridor Advisory Committee was established in 1992 by Durham and other governmental bodies in order to advise on responsible development in the watershed. They supported large developments on Garrett Road and Mount Moriah Moog near 15501 that did not unduly burden the infrastructure or damage the watershed. And as you noted, a part of the New Hope Creek Arrowhead has key repairian buffers that should be protected. The committee agrees with the planning staff and the Planning Commission to protect the watershed, and I will send you a copy of that report in the mail. Second, we had an evaluation done by a professional land planner at Womble Bond Dickinson that echoes all the recommendations that the planning staff and the Planning Commission have made, in which Arrowhead remains rural and agricultural. I'll also provide that report to you. Third, I've had conversations with the landowner, and we've discussed development that should be suitable for the area, not a mixed-use neighborhood, whose impervious surface would dramatically affect the water quality and the stormwater runoff of which they already have floods. And lastly, just quickly, I've heard statistics about failing septic, 10%, 20% of failing septic. I actually checked with the Durham Health Department. We have 12,000 septics in Durham, and less than 0.3% of the septic actually fail. And I'd like to applaud the Durham Health Department for doing the necessary inspections to keep our water safe. Thank you.
My name is David Durack. I've lived in the Arrowhead area for 46 years. Our property is in the voluntary agricultural district and also in the present use program for farming and hay production. The current plan excludes the Arrowhead area from the UGB for very good reasons, partly community input, other good reasons, but I think very importantly because it supports the farmland preservation plan, which made superb arguments for the preservation of this kind of area and was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners in 2009. And the goals of the farm preservation plan, of course, are clear. We don't need to go over them, environmental, economic, and so on. Tonight, you heard a proposal to include one property in the Arrowhead area back into the UGB. I would like to make, you also heard, not in addition to this proposal, a promise to develop if that is done. I'd just like to make two points. That property is the biggest open area in Arrowhead. If it is included in the UGB and developed, it will seriously compromise the goals of the farmland preservation plan, which are clear. The second point I would make is that I don't think exception should be made for a single property in a group community area. So I support the excellent work of the staff. We really appreciate that, and we support the plan as written in regard to Arrowhead. Thank you.
My name is Duke Williams. I live at 4409 Curly Road and own property on Cornwallis, adjoining us, bringing our total land up to about 20 acres. And I mention that because until today I was unaware of the details of the voluntary agricultural district. And having read that, it mirrors what my wife is doing with some of her property in another county for forestry, and we're going to look into adding our property into the voluntary agricultural district for forestry. Mr. Abrams, who was here, and his attorney was here, asking for his 82 acres to get special treatment. Interestingly enough, put his 82 acres in April into the voluntary agricultural district, and that includes a pledge not to develop for 10 years. Obviously, he's thinking of developing because he's telling you he's going to give you a development program if you approve his exception. I think I would be, it would not be unreasonable to question the sincerity of low-income housing. At any rate, Arrowhead has the largest proportion of acreage of any area you're looking at in the voluntary agricultural district, and we're pleased with that. We like what that brings to our county, and we feel like the code and the ordinances that Durham has makes that an option that you have a duty to support, and I would just ask you to continue to support that. Thank you.
Tim Silver. Is it Silver? Okay. Ken Pugh. Sorry, gone? Okay, great. Rachel Baker. Okay. And that's Aaron Cole. C-O-L-L, Cole. Okay.
Followed by Heidi Grable, Donald Frederick, and Tristan Bashan. Bashan.
Thank you. My name is James Chavis. I stay at 2813 Ashbury apartment in Durham. May I hope and I pray that our city council and our county commission have been listening loudly and clear. Our county manager and our representative for One the Page has also been listening because that's our government sitting up there. And we, the people, have to understand that they must understand us and realize we are not asking for something for nothing. We are asking something for something, for the truth to be told, and for y'all to understand what we, the people, are asking for, not what y'all want, but what the people want. You know, I'm looking around here and I'm looking up here. I don't see many Durhamites sitting up there. I see new incomers coming up here, changing rules and regulations to set free for outsiders like to come here and take over. It's time for you all that's here to understand that Durham needs to slow down and make it right for everybody, not somebody, but everybody, because those that does not get 30% to 50% income, they cannot afford to stay in Durham City nor Durham County. Go back and look at the development right now. They should tell each and every last one of you something. How can we retirement people afford to stay in Durham when we can't even afford? We're not getting these 20% to 30% raises like some of the rest of them. And I meant from the $1,000 salary already been making. They can afford it, but we can't.
Mr. Chavis, thank you so much. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tim Severs. I'm the president and CEO of Kunity. We're a 30-member landscape architecture and civil engineering firm at 16 consultant places here in Durham. This evening, I'm here to show my opposition to the new growth management strategy and the current formulation of the urban growth boundary. Our city should be promoting home ownership along with affordability, not limiting the location of the future development by roughly 11 square miles. Two specific areas I'd like to bring your attention is the Cheek Road and Patterson Road area. 4802 Cheek Road is a 70-acre tract of land adjacent to current city limits that can easily be developed with a lift station as well as additional fire protection and is currently in the suburban tier. Just to the south, Patterson Road is a 200-acre tract of land that could be developed with a pump station, which is typically constructed by developers, not the city. The straw poll taken by the Planning Commission was a split six-to-five vote. After recently meeting with planning department and water management staff, these departments are willing to allow a pump station for development in the Patterson Road area. The landowners, as you heard tonight, want to be part of that 15-minute city, and they are merely hundreds of feet from the NC 98 corridor. The Patterson Road area is currently in the suburban tier, was included in the urban growth boundary on the initial draft, but then removed on the second draft. Tonight, I encourage you to be fair to these landowners that were promised the possibility of development and take an additional look at the areas like Cheek Road, like Patterson Road area, and other areas discussed by members of the community tonight that should remain in the urban growth boundary and allow the future development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. I just wanted to thank the county commissioners, the city council, and especially the planning staff for hearing us out in the past and, you know, listening to our concerns. One of the innumerable stressors that has affected Durham-
Sir, if you could state your name.
Aaron Coley. I'm at 101 Karamore Lane. One of the innumerable stressors affecting Durham is the crowding of public schools within the city and county. Thoughtful planning and considerations of what areas of Durham can support growth and evaluation of burden on existing infrastructure is necessary for city design and echoed in the comprehensive plan policies. The proposal to expand the UGB into Arrowhead is an example of a request lacking foresight. One such implication is the increased overcrowding of Forest View. We've heard Forest View mentioned a couple of times tonight as a walkable school, while that walkable school is already at 104% of capacity. And there's already a seven-acre rezoning request that has been approved that the city planning staff have estimated will add 17 more students to that existing school. There are temporary classrooms everywhere, and the infrastructure is simply not being considered in these types of requests. Durham has added two new elementary schools, and rationale for focusing growth in those areas is supported by investments made where infrastructure can more readily accommodate growth. UGB expansion into Arrowhead is not in alignment with the investments of city planning goals and objectives, nor with the policies of the comprehensive plan. And I'll just add as a final aside that I don't think any of the roads in Arrowhead are particularly underutilized. I invite any of you to come out there at any point during the day, and I promise you you'll see exactly why underutilized is a pretty serious misnomer for the area. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Donna Frederick from Bragtown. My address is on file, I'm sure. I just wanted to commend the commissioners and the city council for staying and listening to your citizens. I've heard some remarkable stories from personal councils, what growth is doing to our citizens. And I hope this put a personal touch that's beyond the paper that's written in the comprehensive plan. There's some great things in the plan, and there's some things that need to be tweaked. And one of the things I heard is what happened when development affects your home. There's no recourse for us to get paid. There's no recourse for us to have the ability to even fight because we have to deal with some of the ordinances that are already in place. I just ask that these projects and these plans be really looked at case by case, and I know it's overwhelming for staff, but we are talking about people's lives, people's families, their schools, the way they are transportation from place to place. It is really critical. So I just thank you and commend all that came out. All the citizens, thank you so much for staying, and it's really important that we show others. We need our voices to be heard, and thank you very much.
I live in Arrowhead. My address is on file. Madam Mayor, Chair, council members, and commissioners, I first want to thank you for providing this venue to hear from the community. I think it's very important. I've been very impressed also with the Planning Commission's activity. I'm here to add my voice to the eloquent comments made by the other Arrowhead residents in support of the Planning Commission's determination that Arrowhead should remain outside the urban growth boundary. And I would like to particularly compliment the Planning Commission. Their work was deliberative, and I might even say exhaustive, and I think they correctly took into account the many factors which make Arrowhead a very sensitive area for development. We've heard tonight how some developers might take advantage of the situation without oversight. Just across Erwin Road to the southeast, there's been a lot of development where they're putting $700,000-plus houses on fractions of an acre. I think the likelihood that any affordable housing would come up in Arrowhead, should it be open to development, is very low, and it is a very sensitive area for development. So again, I strongly support the Planning Commission's determination that Arrowhead should remain outside the urban growth boundary. Thank you very much.
My name is Heidi Grable. I live in North Durham, but I also lived in the Arrowhead area from 1994 to 2010. I'm a lifelong resident of Durham, and thank you all for being here tonight and all of your considerations and all of the citizens also. I wish that I could replay Mr. Chavis's speech 10 times. I ask you all to slow down. Please make decisions for current Durham residents, not people planning to move to our area. I was in the initial meeting for the new comprehensive plan as an ambassador at the round tables downstairs, the very first meeting. I am a realtor in my ninth year. I give tours to relocating people for companies and for people moving here. I meet many people and hear their- I meet many people and hear their reactions to Durham. I do not want to increase the properties in the urban growth boundary and specifically to keep Arrowhead out of the urban growth boundary. All of Arrowhead is a wildlife corridor between forests along Erwin and Whitfield Roads. That is a very important component to Durham County. When you are making your decisions, I hope you all will value how living in Durham feels. An article in Southern Living magazine dated March 2022 says, "Durham is particularly interesting for those who enjoy art, architecture, and history, though there are lots of places nearby to escape urban life and get closer to nature. Quality of life is important." Affordable housing is possible with help from the government and government programs. We cannot build affordable housing from scratch with today's building costs, labor challenges, and financing costs at this time. Affordable housing can only be addressed by refurbishing and renovating properties that exist and using federal grants, government programs, and monies that have been tagged for urban housing that the Durham Housing Department is trying to apply but has expressed it cannot implement fast enough because there are challenges to the market, creating affordable housing and lack of staff distributing funds, not a lack of permits being handed out." Thank you very much.
We have reached the end of our speakers who have joined us in person tonight. Thank you all so much. And we will now turn to our speakers on the internet who have signed up to speak with us as well. If you desire to speak, you have about two minutes to raise your hand if you're on the internet and allow our clerk to be able to take notice those hands for us as we start with Lamya Hayes, followed by Andrew Ray, George Roberson, Pamela Wyman, and Jim Savara. And if you will sign up by the time Lamya Hayes finishes, we will take note and add you to the end. And it may be here just as a resource. Not there anymore? All right. Andrew Ray. Pamela Wyman. Pamela Wyman, W-Y-M-A-N. Jim Savara, S-V-A-R-A. Mr. Savara will be followed by Holly Fakaro, Rebecca Freeman, Thomas Freeman, and Latosha Gibson. Mr. Savara?
Yes, Jim Savara, 12 Susanna Drive. Represent the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit. And I would like to thank the three persons from the coalition who spoke earlier in person for their strong statements in support of the draft comp plan. Please remember their key suggestions for improvement to the plan. First, develop a clear and measurable goal for a percentage of housing units in new developments to be affordable. Second, do a final editing of the plan's growth management strategy, policies, and actions and place type sections to clearly and consistently incorporate housing equity, affordable housing expectations. Third, affordability should continue to be defined as at least 30 years and in perpetuity when possible, as the comprehensive plan states, and housing for people with incomes below 30 and 50% AMI should be prioritized. Our Coalition for Housing and Transit notes that this plan works toward focusing more housing, including affordable housing, along existing or planned high-quality and high-frequency transit routes. The Coalition commends the city-county planning department, the elected officials, and the planning commission for the huge effort they have made to engage as many residents as possible in the planning process. Staff, community members, and elected officials have worked hard over the past three years to plot the way forward for Durham. We call on you, our elected leaders, to adopt this plan with final edits and then to follow its guidelines and tools to ensure that all Durham residents, especially those who are struggling, are able to maintain and improve their quality of life as the county grows. Thank you so much.
All right. Anyone else there?
Holly Fakaro. We can hear you. Miss Fakaro, is she on the internet?
I am here.
All right, Ms. Fakaro.
Good evening. My name is... Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Holly Fakaro. I'm the CEO of the Home Builders Association of Durham, Orange, and Chatham Counties. There have been many compelling arguments to keep the urban growth boundary unchanged and also unfortunately many examples of misinformed public. I want to be very clear. The new proposed comprehensive plan presented does not propose an expansion of the urban growth boundary outside of Arrowhead. My career prior to joining the HBA DOC was as an affordable housing developer and the best tool a community can use in developing affordable and missing middle housing is through density. The proposed decrease in the UGB will remove 11 square miles, which equals 7,000 acres. 7,000 acres equals 21,000 homes at a modest three homes per acre. Conversely, that same property by right could be developed into McMansions on two-acre parcels with sewer and septic, which despite what has been said today is far from best practice. By right, for those who do not know, means that they do not have to request a change to the zoning and can take the property through the planning department without public hearing. So zero opportunity for the planning staff and elected body to ask the developers for an environmental and community-sustaining options like covering the cost of infrastructure improvement, which I assure you the development community will be more than happy to invest in. If you are a yes to the proposed plan, decreasing the UGB are a yes to sprawl and a no to affordable and missing middle housing. We heard a lot of concern about the environment. The Sierra Club, the nation's most recognized grassroots environmental organization, has been warning the public about the negative impact of sprawl to the environment since the 1990s. So a yes to sprawl is also a no to good environmental stewardship. I urge elected by pulling the UGB out of consideration altogether. Bring together experts in smart growth and city planning like Mitchell Silver to help create a vision for the future that the city and the county of Durham can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Freeman?
Michelle Bush? Thomas Freeman?
No.
Michelle Bush is here.
Tasha Gibson?
No.
James Adcock. Mr. Adcock and Ms. Bush, you will follow Mr. Adcock. Mr. Adcock, you have the floor, sir. For two minutes.
Board members, this is James Adcock, 135 North Main Street, Fuquay Varina, North Carolina. I'm an attorney and I represent the Glenn Curran and Sue Curran Revocable Trusts. The trust owns property out at 4802 Cheek Road and this property is near the intersection of Redwood Road and Cheek Road. The property is approximately 70 acres and is currently undeveloped. The property is currently within the suburban development tier and within the urban growth boundary, but not under the proposed comprehensive plan. We're in discussion with developers to develop this property and the proposed changes will result in the property being undevelopable and will not allow the highest and best use of the property to be realized. There are several residential developments surrounding the property with densities consistent with the existing land use plan and retaining this property within the urban growth boundary will maintain the consistency of development and the density in the immediate area. And we respectfully request that the board consider adding our property back into the UGB and preserving the suburban development tier under the new plan. And we appreciate the board's consideration and appreciate all the work that staff and elected officials have done working on this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bush, you have the floor.
Okay. I'm visually impaired, a VIP. I'm a visually impaired person, so it's kind of hard for me to get to hit the click. But I want to say this. There are 258,000 blind or low-vision people living in North Carolina. And if anybody tells you that being blind or legally blind or even low-vision is an easy road to hoe, I can sell you the Brooklyn Bridge.
I'm sorry about that phone. Let me just go on another one. I'm sorry about that. I can't turn it off. That was my caregiver's phone. But what I wanted to say is there is a product called IARA out that would benefit blind and low-vision people very much. There's out Be My Eyes, which helps us a lot, but we are told not to give private information to those people. But with IARA, they are bonded and they are professionals and they can help with blind and low-vision people with working on their finances or medical information. And I'd like to see all North Carolinians have this. So what better place to start with in Durham? And I do plan to push for it for the whole state, but whereas some people have large families, some don't. I'm one of the people... My caregiver was in a car wreck a couple of months ago and suffered traumatic brain injury and I'm having a pretty...
Ms. Bush, we're so sorry for what's happened to you, but your time has expired.
Okay. Well, all I want to say is please consider getting IARA, A-I-R-A, for the blind and low-vision people in Durham and the state of North Carolina.
Thank you.
Before Chair Howerton calls, the last person, I believe he raised his hand, I just want to verify that Deborah Mixon is not still with us. Natalie Beauchine, B-E-A-U-C-H-I-N-E, she's not on the internet either. All right. Call your last person. WTVD had signed up, but I think they're in the audience or may be gone. They may not want to speak. All right. Last person. The last person is Josh Abram.
Hello. My name is Josh Abram. I live in an apartment in Trinity Park. Thank you for your time and your consideration. My ask is simple. Please allow affordable housing in Arrowhead. Allow affordable housing in Arrowhead. Some of the Arrowhead neighbors want more development and housing in Durham and I agree with them. They just want it elsewhere, but Arrowhead is a fantastic place for it, given its prime location and low traffic and closeness to Duke University. So please allow more, allow affordable housing in Arrowhead. Thank you very much.
She didn't... So they signed off?
Okay. Cool.
You'd have to talk to this gentleman over here. I don't know anything about the technology.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Chair Howerton. I wanted to let you know that Rebecca Freeman and Thomas Freeman had signed up to speak, but they are unable to connect to the meeting. And I'm not sure what the issue is on their end, but we have them on our list, but they
Okay. Is anyone... We'll try to see if we can get Vivian. Vivian, if you're in the back before we close the public hearing, if you could try to see
She's working on it. So staff is working on it.
We're going to try and email them a direct link and see if we can do that.
Okay. How long will it take you to do that?
Hopefully just a minute.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
All right. We'll stand at ease for about two minutes because they will be our last two speakers before we close the public hearing. If you could, if you could call them, you could try. If you could get them on the phone, that's... We will make an exception so we could go ahead and do it.
Are you ready to go? All right. You guys...
Chris, you got it?
I've got Thomas Freeman on the line if you'd like to speak.
Okay. Can you put him on speaker?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. You're queued up. Go for it.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I used the city of Durham link. I hear some noise in the background.
Yeah, we can hear you good. Go ahead and speak, please.
Okay. My apologies. I wanted to make the point that when a citizen goes to the Durham City Council and clicks on the link that carries you to YouTube, which does not allow you to speak, so perhaps there are other citizens like myself who have used their route to get to their meeting and ended up at a dead end. Can you still hear me okay?
Please, can y'all hear? Yes, yes. Please keep going.
Okay. Very good. I heard Sarah Long, when she opened up, she talked about balance, growth management strategy, and intensity. And it is just the intensity I'd like to speak to. The intensity that I'm speaking to is a system where in our community it goes from rural residential to 12 PDR, 12 PDR. The scientific evidence is clear. High-density development to include mass grading on triassic basin soils has destroyed I'd like you to examine the damage that's already been done without development in the critical watershed. Closest construction is 2.5 miles away from NC 98 at Falls Lake. This is Lit Creek I'm talking about. You go look at the evidence and you tell me that you don't see the empirical proof that the mass grading, high density, is leading to the destruction of the environment that we see. I'd also like to bring up the point that there are unintended consequences. The southeast regional lift station on Kip Road...
Mr. Freeman, your time is up. If you can wrap up the conversation?
Can you wrap up your comments briefly? The time's over.
Yes. I wanted to say that what the city council has done in constructing that facility... I wanted to say that what the city council has done in constructing that facility, but for the construction of that facility, we would not be suffering the environmental damage on Lit Creek. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Can you get Rebecca on the phone?
I'm here.
Okay. It would probably be helpful if you would mute the speaker on your computer. That's probably why you're getting the feed. Okay. Go ahead.
Now? Hello?
Yeah, you're live. Go ahead.
I can hear you.
Good evening, County Commissioner Chair Harold Howerton, City Council Mayor O'Neill, and Commission Council Members. Rebecca Freeman, 1818 Southview Road, Durham, and thank you for the opportunity to speak, especially under the circumstances that I am in tonight. I oppose moving the Cheek, Redwood Road area, the Patterson Road area, and the Kemp Road area into the urban growth boundary. Please keep them in the suburban tier. Furthermore, stop all retraction from the future growth area of Kemp Road East. Do not carve out future growth area at the behest of developers planning two large developments and a charter school with up to 1,200 children in an area without adequate infrastructure to support those properties, and also the environmental issues that exist there. The future growth area at Kemp Road is heavily forested, is bisected by Lit Creek, and at least nine intermittent streams that feed Lit Creek. It adjoins the critical watershed. Currently, there are no approved or active developments east of Kemp Road and NC 98. However, Lit Creek east of Kemp Road is already heavily denigrated by developments to the west of Kemp Road. This is supported by objective data. Moving these areas into the urban growth allows up to 70% of impervious surface. Developing with up to 70% impervious surface in the future growth area will exponentially increase the environmental destruction of Southeast Durham, particularly around Lit Creek and into the Falls Lake. I refer you to Durham City's Public Works webpage that states how impervious areas affect the environment. Studies have shown that local water bodies are less healthy when as little as 10% of an area is covered in impervious surfaces. 10%. If more than 30% of an area is covered in impervious surfaces, this can severely damage nearby streams, rivers, and lakes. Impervious surfaces are the single most important factor affecting the amount of water flowing off a property, how quickly that water will flow, and the amount of pollution that will be picked up and carried with that water. I ask you to use scientific evidence and your own experts to guide you to keep the Cheek Road, Redwood area, the Patterson Road area, Kemp Road area out of the urban growth boundary that allows up to 70% surface high-density development.
The time...
All right. Go ahead.
You want me to tell the grand rap? Wrap it up?
Yes.
Yeah. Time is up.
I request each of you who have not visited the Southeast area to tour there and actually put your feet on the ground in some of those developments.
Thank you, ma'am. We're going to have to let you go. Thank you.
...and degradation of the environment. Please speak to them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks. I'm going to hang up, okay?
Thank you for that.
So I appreciate you all accommodating that.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Hearing done. Let the record reflect that no one else has requested to speak on this item, and I will bring this public... The public hearing to a close, and it's back before the bodies. And the county commissioners will have discussions, the county and the mayor.
We too will have discussions.
Okay. Is there anything else that we need to handle tonight?
Just say thank you to all you all who came down here this evening and spoke to us tonight, and those who were here on the Internet as well. And thank you to our county commissioners and our chair, and thank you to my colleagues as well, and all of our staff from both the city and the county. And at 10:12...
And I just, before you... I just want to say thanks, both bodies, because it's... I know it's been difficult for them to sit and not talk.
All right. I just want to say thank you. All right. Well, at 10:13 on the last day of August of the year 2023, we stand adjourned. Durham County and Durham City, strong.
Yes. That's right. [applause][1776.63]